At this time. And when we get to the pledge, Supervisor Goodman will lead us in the pledge.
Mr. Jones?
God didn't get me out of bed way before I was ready to and drive all the way down here for nothing, so he must like you people or else not. Except I thank you I didn't come all the way down here for a ritual opening. So let's have a little prayer that's edifying. Father, we know there was a time that we were not, but there will never be a time again that we will not be. Those of us that have chosen to accept your son will rule and reign with you forever. Meantime, we're told to obey the ordinance of man and honor the king. But we are reminded that the pilgrims colonized this country, and when our forefathers defended it from the intruders, they decided the king of this nation would be we, the people. So we, the people, ask you for the courage and the intelligence to defend our constitution as did our forefathers. We ask you to give our chosen men here, leaders, special wisdom, and bless each individual here with the knowledge to make the right decisions. Bless these ceremonies in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Please join in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Thank you, gentlemen. Just a reminder, and this is for the board and anybody speaking, we need to make sure that we are close enough and that the microphone picks up our voices. If we're up here speaking, we need to make sure our microphones are on. When we do this number, they lose track of us. So try and focus on the microphone and for the speakers as well. That microphone is adjustable, so you can get it in the position. So I appreciate an effort to do that. First item of this is called "Public: Consideration and Discussion of Comments from the Public." Those wishing to address the public -- the Pinal County Board of Supervisors may appear in person or submit in writing comments which shall be submitted to the clerk of the board by close of business hours at 5:00 p.m. the day prior to the meeting. Comments shall be no more than 250 words. Actions taken as a result of the public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter and/or reschedule the matter for further consideration and discussion at a later date. And so I'm going to start out with the public here in person. I believe we only have one emailed in, and I'll have Natasha address that after we do the public comment. But I do want to notify everyone that we're going to go back to pre-COVID scenario, so the public comment period will need to be in person, not emailed in. So we're going back to the way we did it for years. And so if you do have public comments and you wish to address the board, you'll need to do it in person going forward, so starting next meeting. So is there anybody from the audience that would like to address the Board of Supervisors at this time? Come forth, gentlemen. Your name, at least the general location of where you live. You have three minutes. And--
Good morning, supervisors. My name is Brett Marchant. I'm in Santan Valley, resident for the past 40 years. This is regarding the shooting range that you're probably familiar with. I spoke -- I sent an email last Friday to Chief Deputy Matthew Thomas with the Pinal County Sheriff's Department, wanted to follow up on what's going on with the proposed shooting range. He sent me back an email, says, "We've been working on this project for over two years now, and for all the reasons we have discussed with you, we are in fact moving forward. PCSO has worked with Public Works and the county attorney's office through this entire process to ensure that we have all the necessary studies and clearances to do so, including our allowances and exemptions provided by the law." I guess what I'm asking is, I know you're not the right people to ask this, but what provisions does the sheriff's department have to just take a 10-acre parcel in the middle of 600 acres or 500 ground? I'm going to join it, touch in it, and say we have an exemption to put a shooting range with high-powered rifles in the middle of people's property and devalue it down to 10% of its value. No one, I don't think anyone in this room, or including the sheriffs themselves, would agree that if someone was putting a shooting range adjoining their property would agree with that. And we're just asking before this keeps moving forward, because it sounds to me that the sheriff's office is saying, "We don't care. We're going to railroad and just bully right over everybody and make it happen regardless of your opinions and your values of your properties." And I'm just asking the supervisors to help us move forward with this. I believe, as well as all the property owners that I'm representing, that if the due process would have been taken according to the Pinal County rules to go and notify the neighbors, I don't think it would have went through, and it'd been a waste of money. They're taking a 10-acre flat piece of ground. Every shooting range I've ever seen in the state or in the United States that I've ever seen has had a mountain in the backdrop. This is flat, so unless you're going to spend a lot of money building a mountain, it seems to me that the county could approve purchasing a piece of state land that doesn't directly affect citizens, taxpayers, property owners that are beneficial to this county. So I appreciate you guys taking the consideration, listening to us. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. I think we can have staff give us an update on that in the future. Anybody else?
Good morning. Chairman Miller, Vice Chairman Goodman, Tom Bean, Pinal -- yeah, excuse me, Casa Grande. I'm going to read two letters to you. One was directed to the Board of Supervisors and one was directly directed to Mr. McClure, but also to the supervisors. To the Board of Supervisors, regarding the recent cuffle over a prayer that wasn't said at the Pinal County Board of Supervisors meeting on November 3rd, does the separation of church and state really need to be pointed out? This is a critical tenet of our democracy. Prayer belongs at your church, temple, synagogue, mosque, parochial school, and in your heart, but most certainly not at a government meeting, a business meeting, or a public school. I'm not a socialist, an atheist, or an agnostic, but my religion and yours do not belong in a form that is meant for the public, where everyone is free to worship or not as he or she sees fit. It is discriminatory and offensive to invoke a particular religious belief at the start of a meeting or in a school if it does not apply to all. Our country was formed of diversity and freedom of religion. Respect for religion is shown by not imposing one above others or imposing any in a public and governmental form. That was written by Debbie Dorman of Eloy. This one specifically was, at one time, directed to Supervisor McClure. I've been given permission to also read this one. I'm contacting you regarding the Pinal Board of Supervisors' policy of beginning public meetings with a Christian prayer. While I believe that the intent might be innocuous, the impact can be serious. Our nation was born and based on the premise of being a secular government. The First Amendment to our Constitution was specifically put in place to protect and defend against any sectarian takeover. Because the Pinal County Board of Supervisors is an official governmental operation, steps should be taken to prevent any religion from being publicly promoted. While this issue might seem trivial compared to the problems facing Pinal County, it is one that sets a dangerous tone of intolerance and is in direct conflict with the United States Constitution. One need look to the examples abroad where sectarian governments use religion to undermine civil rights of minorities, those with different beliefs, and especially full economic and political participation of women. I urge you to take the necessary steps to correct this problem. There are many ways for the public, for the official public government meetings to invite spiritual influence without promoting any specific religious beliefs over others. Please let me know of your position and reasoning on this matter. And this is signed Ralph Achu, one of your members. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak at this time? Seeing none. Natasha, did you have -- are you looking for somebody?
Just making sure there wasn't one else in the--
Oh, okay. And you know what? Did I gavel? I don't think I hit the gavel, did I? Well. Sorry about that, gang. Natasha, you have one email that was sent in, and as I said at the beginning of the meeting, this format will cease at this time. You'll need to do public comment in person going forward. Pre-COVID rules are back in place.
Yes, Chairman. The clerk of the board office did receive one comment. That comment has been shared with each board member, and also that comment will be made a part of today's meeting record. That comment did come from James Spiegel. The comment is in reference to Mr. Spiegel being in favor of open prayer during the actual meeting of the Board of Supervisors, and also he had some concerns in reference to the board rules, the conviction of those rules, and the board expedient of those rules as well as it relates to the COVID grant that the board approved stating that the board broke their own reconsideration rule 12. Also, the general practice in response in suspending rules in meetings, also with the elimination of Robert Rules of Order. And he states that the people of Pinal County deserve unwavering fairness, honesty, transparency, respect for our founding values, and we are not getting that. And that is the only comment that was received by the clerk of the board office, Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Moving on. Item number two. Presentation of certificates service to the employees for 20, 25, and 35 years. Leo.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Board. For logistics, when we do this, we'll go ahead and announce who the recipients are and have them come up, and if they receive their award, and if they want to say something to the board, to the public, that's fine, or if their supervisors want to as well, they can. And then after each individual one is done, if they can stick around, so at the end, as a big group, they can come over and take a photo with you and with the board and the rest of the group.
So we'll wrap it up with a group photo?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Who do you have first?
So first, I'll mention there's a couple of employees that weren't able to be here today. Rodney Banks from IT is not present, but he's been here for 20 years. Started back in 2001 as a PC analyst, and in 2008 was promoted to an IT engineer and is currently an IT support supervisor. So thank you, Rodney. And then also not present with us this morning is Sabine Johnson from Community Development. And she was hired back in 1996 as an administrative clerk two and was promoted a year later to Secretary One, has been providing that support to community development for 25 years. So thank you, Sabine. And then for those that are present, first we have Jaclyn Lopez with the county attorney's office. She's been here 20 years, was originally hired as a victim witness advocate, and in 2007 was promoted to her current position as a victim advocate senior.
Hey, Jaclyn. If Jaclyn or Kent wanted to have anything to say.
Ken Volker, Pinal County Attorney. I have to embarrass Jaclyn a little bit. She's been here for 20 years. She has been a tremendous asset for our community. Just within the last year, she was actually named as the victim advocate for the state of Arizona. So we have a true gem before us. She has dedicated her life. She's got an amazing personal story. I'd encourage each of you to speak with her. She really epitomizes what we want from victim advocates. She'll, you know, she does 35 different jobs. If somebody needs something, she steps in. So I have to take this opportunity to really just praise her and what she does for our office and what victim advocates do as a whole. So her service is certainly very much appreciated by not only me, but the entire county and every advocate that's come in contact with her.
Thank you. County Attorney?
Thank you, Kent. Thank you, Jaclyn.
Jackie, did you want to say anything?
I was just going to say that I'm proud to be able to call. Pinal County is my second home, home away from home. Yes, it's changed over the years and stuff, but in comparison to the other counties, I feel like, you know, the county really does support their employees, and if it weren't for the people that I work for and the support that I get, I wouldn't have been able to stay here this long.
Great. That's great feedback.
Great. Thank you.
You going to do an individual picture? Jackie, if you could step over--
Do a group at the end. Yeah. No, no problem. We're going to do a big group picture with all of the recipients and the board at the Next, and I hope I pronounced this right, forgive me if I don't, Waketa Cowley from Adult Probation. She's been here as a probation officer since 2001, and in 2003 was promoted to probation officer two, and then in 2006 probation officer three, and then 2008 probation officer four, and then in 2017 was promoted to probation supervisor, which she holds today. So thank you, Waketa.
So I apologize to correct you as Jaqueta. But that's okay. I'm Brian Colgan. Chief, good morning, everyone. I'm Brian Colgan. Chief McCombe couldn't be present today, so I'm filling in for him. And we collected some comments to, you know, really toast and roast Jaqueta this morning. But I'll only read one. Jaqueta makes everyone around her better. She sincerely cares about each person she talks to. She consistently goes out of her way to make a positive difference every day. And will you please consent to being cloned?
Being an extreme introvert, not really.
That's good enough.
I will mimic what Jaclyn said. It's about the people I work with. For 20 years, I've made some outstanding friends and colleagues and coworkers, and they make it worth it every day coming in. So thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Jaqueta. Next, we have John Kraft from Public Works, and he was hired back in 2001 as a civil engineer. And since then, he was promoted in 2012 to a senior civil engineer, and in 2017, or actually just most recently, he's been promoted to our traffic engineer, and that's probably been a couple of weeks ago. So congratulations, John. And are you here with us?
Is John out here?
I did have a note that he wanted to say a few words.
I bet he did.
Yeah.
John and I get along real well.
Yeah, John's working on a lot of projects throughout the county over the 20 years.
Yes, he has.
Great guy.
I think he's on his way over.
Yeah. Well, if he comes back, we'll get him in here.
Do we have another one?
Yeah. Next, we have Paula Mullenix, who you've all seen before.
Yeah.
And has been here since 2001. Started as an environmental investigator, was promoted a year later to zoning inspector, and then a year later to code compliance officer, and since 2016 has been the code compliance manager. Hi, Paula.
Hi.
Good morning.
And Lester.
Lester, you going to say a few words?
Morning, Board. Yes. So as you know, code compliance, when they arrive at someone's house, generally is not a pleasant situation. So it does take a special kind of person to be a code compliance officer, and I think Paula exemplifies that type of person, being passionate about her job, dedicated, and fair. I know her team, our department, and the county is lucky to have her. So I want to congratulate her on her 20 years.
Thank you. Paula, did you want to say a few words?
I always want to say a few words, unfortunately, but--
That's all right.
Just that I came out to Arizona in 2001, came out here, came on a Friday pulling my horse and trailer behind me, and from Illinois, and decided I had two job offers in Phoenix and one for Pinal County. And I chose Pinal County because it is a rural county, and I love the goals and the people here, and I believe in public service, and that's a big part of why I do this job, is to help the public. And I had hoped Pinal County would offer me the opportunity to be able to be more one-on-one with the public and to help them. And it did do that. So I've gone through the ups and downs with Pinal County. Have we gone from three to five members of the board, increased population, but I think we've done really well on trying to keep that integrity and keep the rural nature of the county, and I'm just proud that I had the opportunity to do this and to serve the public. And I always want to remember that. It does get frustrating, code compliance, but I'm here to make that an easier process for the public, and I just want to thank the chairman and members of the board for recognizing that today. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula.
Thank you, Paul.
Kind words. Is that it?
Next, we're into our 25-year category, and we have Laura Alexander with Pinal County Sheriff's Office, was hired back in 1996 as an admin clerk two, and was promoted in 2017 as to an administrative assistant, and has been providing support services for them for 25 years. Hi, Laura.
Is anybody here to--
I guess I don't have anybody with me today. It's okay. I get enough of the bosses at work. But I've been here 25 years. I've always felt that helping other people is really important. You told me not to cry. But I feel like I've been helping people, whether it's doing inmate mail, whether it's doing commissary, whether it's answering the phones and helping the public find out what's going on with their family. So I've been able to do that. So that's been really cool. Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay. Last but not least, we have somebody who's been with the county for 35 years. Started in 1986 as a ward clerk in the public fiduciary's office, was promoted in 1993 to account clerk, and then in 1996 to case manager two, and since 2018 has been a guardian administrator supervisor. And Rhonda Garcia from the public fiduciary's office. I don't know if you see her. I thought she would be. Hi, Rhonda. And as I'm sure as they can attest, there's been a lot of people who have been there for many years.
I'm the director of the department, and I have to say Rhonda is an asset to the department as well as to the county, and we are very happy for her. She's planning on staying another five years, so that's her goal.
That's fantastic.
I have another picture.
That's great.
You'll see a mural for you.
Yeah.
Did you want to say anything? Okay. Okay, so is that it?
Yep. So that's it.
So if we could have all the recipients come up, so we can get a group photo with the Board of Supervisors, which I'm sure you'll really want to see that. Exactly. Come on up. If you have guys at school, go down there and shake their hands and thank them. And, oh, caught my attention. And three, two, look at this one right here. Three, two, one, and we're going to do a couple more, just to make sure. Three, two, one, and one last one. Three, two. There we go. Thank you. I think the thing that's -- this is always fun to do, to recognize our employees and their years of service. I think the thing that's starting to stand out to me is all the diverse jobs we have. I mean, we cover a large gamut of positions and needs in the workforce, so I think it's interesting at times. So--
We do a lot of stuff here in the county.
Do a lot of stuff. You know, that's right. I mean, it's just amazing. Okay. Brings us to item number three, county managers' report, information only. Mr. Luke.
Just that the Friday after Thanksgiving is a county holiday, so our normal operations will be closed for that, and hope everybody has a happy Thanksgiving and their holidays full of family laughs and gratefulness. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Item number four, purchasing division report for November 17, 2021. Karen, are you Karen?
It's nice meeting you, Chair, Board. First time here. Got the little shakes, but I'm okay.
Okay. And your name is?
My name is Karen Williams.
Okay.
I am the interim procurement manager. I am also the procurement, one of the procurement officers, so I'm dual-rolling right now.
Okay. Great.
I'm here to do the purchasing division report for November 17, 2021. First up today is the board is requested to approve the following contract amendments, RFP 161722. We recommend the approval of amendment four to exercise the option and extension period for document recording and reporting with Harris Recording Solutions. This contract is used by the recorder's office. Next, we -- is the ROQ 171622. Recommend approval for amendment four to exercise optional extension period for the nursing services with the following companies. Danell Patrick's NP, Deanna Gutella NP, Delta T Group Phoenix, Inc., Karen Carey WHNP, and Ro Health. This contract is used by Public Health. The next one is RFP 202725. We recommend approval for amendment one to exercise the optional extension period for the court order evaluation services with the following companies. Community Bridges, Inc., and Sonora Behavioral Health. This contract is used by public fiduciary department or office. Next is the RFQ 202925. We recommend approval for amendment one to exercise the optional extension period for open spaces and trail fee study with MGT of American Consulting LLC, and this contract is used by open spaces and trails. Next, the board is requested to approve the following purchase request per Pinal County Procurement Code Section PC 1-350 governing competition in practical purchases over $100,000. The amount is $155,101. It is for John Thomas Company. The description is a deo, a deco, portable traffic signals, and this is for Public Works. Last, the board is also hereby notified of the following cooperative purchases made. PO 245840, an amount of $231,121.05 for Data Bank IMX LLC. It is for Highland Software Maintenance Renewal and is for IT department. PO 246297 is for $183,356. It is for-- It is for Privati, Inc. It is for internal audit and it is for the clerk of the board. The next PO is 246397 and the amount of $224,449. It is to for Federal Engineering, Inc., for consulting services and the department is PO 2426, I'm sorry, 6298 and the amount of 171, 600, I'm sorry. Let me start over with that one. PO 246298 in the amount of $171,684.97 for Santan Ford. This is for a 2022 F-550 for fleet and public works. And that will conclude our purchasing division report for November 17, 2021.
Okay, any questions, Karen? Okay, board's pleasure.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the purchasing division report dated November 17, 2021.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Thank you very much. Brings us to item number five on the agenda, consent items. All items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless the board member, county manager, or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Does anybody want anything pulled from the consent items today? County manager, public? Okay, seeing none? Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve consent, consent items A through U as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Thank you. I'm going to recess the regular meeting and move to the Pinal County Library District So the Pinal County Library District Board Meeting is open on the agenda. Ask the board, are there any public comments? Seeing none. Okay, we only have one item or on consent items, which is A and B. All, all, all items indicated by an asterisk will be handled in a single vote as part of the consent items unless a board of supervisor, county manager, or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Does anyone want either A or B removed? Seeing none? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I move we approve consent items A and B as written.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. I'll adjourn the public library meeting and move to the public health district meeting. So the Pinal County, Pinal County Public Health Services Direct District Board Meeting is open. On the agenda, we have discussion approval or disapproval of the minutes for October 27th. Does anyone have any questions or comments about that? Seeing and hearing none? Do I have a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the minutes as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Thank you. Number two, purchasing division report, public health, November 17th.
Good morning again, Chair, Supervisors. Again, my name is Karen Williams. I am the interim procurement manager, also procurement officer. I am here to present the Public Health Service District Purchasing Division Report for November 17, 2021. First up is the board is requested to approve the following contract awards. RFP 221526 recommended both Paradigm Laboratory LLC and Visit Healthcare be awarded a contract for COVID-19 testing and vaccination, vaccinations. This is contingent upon available funds beginning November 3, 2021 through November 2, 2022 with a four-year, four-one-year option extensions. This contract will be used for the public health department. Then the RFP 222426 recommended e-therapy be awarded for the contract for trauma counseling contingent upon availability of, availability of funds beginning November 3, 2021 through November 2, 2022. For optional extensions, this contract may be used by public, is also, is being used by public health department. And that concludes the public health purchasing division report of November 17, 2021.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
What, Mr. Chair, a quick question. The dates, the dates that you spoke are not the ones that are on?
I, I just realized that I do have an older version. It should be November 17 of 2021 to November 16 of 2022 for both Paradigm Laboratories and Vista Healthcare. And then e-therapy also will be November 17, 2021 through November 16 of 2022. Thank you for that clarification.
That is what is on our agenda item here that we're looking, that I'm looking at.
It's just approving the contracts to move forward. I know that I did speak with the procurement officer contingent to availability funds had to do with the grant that was approved last board meeting. So they're just, once we get it done, just signatures and then we can move forward with them.
Okay, super. Any questions or comments at this time? Hearing or seeing none? Board's pleasure.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the purchasing division report for the public health services district dated November 17, 2021.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I adjourned the public health meeting and we will resume our Pinal County Board of Supervisors meeting. Okay, this brings us to item number eight on the agenda. See if they disagreeing with me. Planning and zoning consent items. So the board shall open collectively public hearing for the following agenda items as a group, as a group. If, if no request is made by the members of the public, staff, members, or board of supervisors, or applicant to be heard specific items, the board shall close the public hearing as such, at such time items are voted on and approved and recommended of the Planning and Zoning Commission. If a request is made by, to be heard on a specific item, the public hearing for such items shall remain open. The board shall separately take testimony and public comment on the remainder of the decision. So I, I'm opening the, a public hearing on these, on this consent item. Anybody wants any of these items removed to speak to them directly or separately? Hearing none? Or seeing none? That brings us to, close the public hearing. Right? Pretty good? Public hearing is closed. So do I have a motion on items, on item eight, A, B, and C?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve planning and zoning consent items A, B, and C as presented.
I have a motion?
Second.
Okay, I have a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Thank you. Okay, now. Thank you. Get me to the right spot here. Item number nine on the agenda, 2021 major amendments. The following, 2021 major amendments to the 2019 Pinal County Comprehensive Plan. Although these, this is a public hearing covering all the following amendments request, requests. The supervisors may ask the public to speak on the major plan amendments request separately as, and may discuss and vote on each one of them separately. So on item number A, 9A, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody want to speak on this? Anybody have a presentation?
While we're waiting for the presentation, this is the culmination of our annual conference, major comprehensive plan process. Just as a reminder, these comprehensive plans began their journey back in May of this year. They go to the Citizens Advisory Committee. They are looked at by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And then we come to our conclusion today. And we have a number of cases for you, just to give you an outline of when some of these dates occurred. Back in September, we did our CAC meeting. Later that month, we had our P and Z meeting. And today, we're, we're talking about our major comprehensive plans today. Major comprehensive plan amendments are not zoning changes. They're an adjustment to our 2019 comprehensive plan with, which authorized broad land use designations. You'll see from the presentations today that there are, they're very focused applications and geared towards solar applications. So we have four today. Box Canyon, PA, PZPA 0221, PA 03, 04, and 05, all in different locations throughout our county. And I'll start off with Box Canyon. So the state land department is the landowner, the Box Canyon Solar Project with Mr. Eric Ellis and Bright Night Solar requesting approval of a major comprehensive plan amendment to redesignate 2,300 acres from high intensity activity center, moderate low-density residential to all to green energy production. And it's four and a half miles east of the Salt River Project Abel Substation, which is actually nine miles north of town here. It's 5.6 miles south of State Route 60 and directly adjacent to State Route 79. To put that all in context, it's just north of the Arizona Guard Reservation. As indicated here by the county map, so right, almost smack dab in the middle of the county. Here's a before and after of if the project were to be approved, our comp plan before would be on the left and our comp plan on the right. So it looks like we're taking about half of the activity center. Activity centers are areas that we've designated in our county for high-intensity urban-like development. Moderate low-density residential is primarily residential, 3.5 dwelling units per acre. Zooming in a little closer to the subject site, largely undeveloped state trust land in the immediate vicinity. There is some private land about two miles to the west. Zooming in even further, this is, the blue on that map is state trust land. And then we have some CR3, which is single-family residential. CR4 is a little bit more dense, single-family residential. CB1 is our commercial zone, and that's about a mile and a half from the subject site. Topography in the immediate area, largely undeveloped in all directions. This is a preliminary site plan of the facility. So if it were to be approved and then the project comes back through a zoning proposal, it may end up looking like this. Solar panels indicated in blue. Areas that are reserved for washes and other critical sites are reserved in green. And then those, that diagonal line is actually a power line. Some site photos, largely undeveloped. Flat topography, 300 megawatts. So that's a pretty big, big facility for us. Timing of development, end of 2024, there will be a battery, battery storage system, which is pretty commonplace these days for releasing that power into the grid when the sun goes down. And there's single-axis tracking, so there are the panels and they kind of rotate along to follow the track of the sun. There is some reverse, reversed, reserved space for commercial use. We, we looked at the proposal and ran it through our ERT project. And there's some wildlife habitat, then some cultural resources that we, we are preserving. Renewable energy, it's temporary, 35 years, not too temporary, but it, but as we all know, solar is fairly benign in terms of land use impacts. And we hope to get a red restoration bond as the project moves forward into the zoning phase. Now, there are several letters of support and some in opposition, but I'll let the applicant talk a little bit more about that when they're here. CAC unfortunately recommended denial. It's a negative area for solar. Water usage, there, there wasn't a lot of discussion about the decommissioning plan, visual impacts, and the transmission line height. However, the P and Z recommended approval. There's several support letters that are in your packets. Just a sample of a couple of them. Little discussion about solar harming property value, and that's not 100% true according to this document here. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have about the proposal.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Staff?
Yeah, I, there is a, is Skyline or any of the roads going to be going through that area?
Yes, sir. So, oh, that green blob there, that's Skyline. So that di, that perpendicular line?
So it breaks it up a little bit? Okay.
Bella Vista, I'm sorry, Bella Fisto.
That's Bella Vista.
Yeah, Bella Vista.
But I think Skyline goes through as well, right? At some point?
Judd.
Judd does? Where's that in conjunction to all of this? On the north or the south side of the property?
South side.
South side.
Okay.
Is that map accurate? It doesn't seem to represent some of the maps that I've seen. The setback from that private property there, I've seen a different map that puts it not touching that private property, but off of it a half a mile or so.
Hmm. This is an accurate representation of the, of the proposal? This is what we received from the applicant?
Okay, I've seen, I've seen different maps, so I've, I mean, what I, what I've seen is where the yellow property is, that I've seen that where it touches, where the joint's in the blue.
This is not updating? Well, the applicant is telling me that this map might be a little bit off. So why don't we talk and hear from the applicant and then we can see what the changes were as, as part of the proposal?
Let me, let me reach out. Supervisor Kavanaugh, did you have a question for staff?
I did with respect, thank you, Mr. Chairman. With respect to remediation, that was one of the concerns of the constituents I spoke with was is there an accurate estimate for remediation in today's prices that can be extrapolated out for 35 years, long after we're dead and gone? And do you, is there a document that represents that?
The applicant, because of their, they know the functionality of the proposal more than staff does. Typically, we have that type of dialogue during the zoning proposal, but I'm sure they've, they've looked into that. but I'm sure they've, they've looked into that.
This, this is a major, a major amendment to the comprehensive plan. We just kind of focus on what we're doing here, right?
Correct, and that's, that's a great segue, that we're looking at, at land use designations. Typically, getting into the site plan deals, the details is not really applicable here, but they're here to talk about that if you, if you want to go down that road.
Okay, well, great, thank you. So, applicant, would you like to come forth on this one?
Thank you, Chairman, Vice Chair, and members of the Board. For your records, I'm Jordan Rose with Rose Law Group. And with me today from Bright Night is Ram Krishnan, the CTO, and Eric Ellis, the Vice President of Development, Ron Cassana, the Chief Development Officer, and Paul Caldwell, the Chief Utility Officer, also Court Rich, the Head of our Renewable Energy Department, to answer detailed questions, and Jennifer Hall, our Senior Planner. Thank you. Perfect. Well, I'm very excited to be here, let's see, today, while they get this up, to talk about Bright Night, and I'll try to answer your questions. I know if we proceed past this, if we're lucky enough to get your support, then we'll come back with a zoning application, which will have a lot of details, but we can talk about those today, too. This is a unique, a unique development, because all of the power here in, in this particular facility is contracted to stay in the state of Arizona. So, this development was originated by the electrical districts in Pinell County, and many of them are here today to talk to you. But they got together and they issued an RFP, and they asked for all sorts of proposals, and they selected Bright Night because they need this power in their portfolio for Pinell County and Pinell County residents, and that's unique to this project. And they can talk to you more about that, but I wanted to mention that, because I think it's very important. So, we do have lots of letters of support. In fact, we have 14 letters of support. We have 10 to 12 businesses signing petitions in support, letters from the Electrical District, the Gila River Utilities Authority, Global Water, the City of Maricopa, and dozens of local businesses. And just to note, the site was carefully selected, not only by the electrical districts when they went into their RFP, but by Bright Night and the State Land Department. The State Land owns this land, the land was already disturbed by miners, it doesn't have any sororos on it or anything like that, and it's far away from anything. So, I know that there was some discussion with State Land about, you know, is this the best use? And they said it absolutely is, because it's so far, it's 20 miles away, for example, of the Apache Junction development that State Land's doing right now. So, it's a great interim use because of the situation with water. The solar is going to use 99% less water than building homes in that area, and as you know, that's, that's helpful. The economic development for this project is really enormous. In fact, and this has just been, the Florence Unified, you can see all of these numbers, but in Florence Unified, that will equal $3.6 million in the first five years. So, that's an extremely good impact, and we have someone here from Elliot Pollack's office to talk more about fiscal impact, if that's interesting to you. We've done extensive work with the community, and we've had great results. Two of the three nearby owners support the use, and that includes the Arizona National Guard, and I think you have a letter from them, and the Magma Flood Control District. The National Guard is in the green there, our property is in the yellow dots, and you can see it, it's adjacent. They're very concerned about, you know, development clearly, because they use mortar, they have mortar and grenade launchers, and that's what they're doing there on the site, and so this is very compatible with that, so that's a positive. We provide a, a good buffer, and we've met many times with the only opposition we have. We have one party that's opposed, and they're here today, they could speak on their own behalf, but we've proposed many concessions. So, in fact, I think one of you said, is that the right map? And it's, it's not the right map, because that was our original application, and subsequent to that, we've made some changes. Like, one of the changes is a new layout with a half a mile buffer. You can see the private property that's opposed to this is in the Caballero designation, and we pushed the panels back a half a mile. That had started out at 660 feet, and then we talked to them, and we went to 1,000 feet, and now we're at 2,600, a half a mile from the property line. So, that's significant. And just to show you, you know, home, and I think their concern is, you know, can we build homes a half a mile from a solar plant? And you can see Meritage Homes, you probably are familiar with Quail Run, that's adjacent to, I mean, it's right there, sold out, it's 150 feet divided by a chain link fence, and we have a block wall, so that, that's fine. Here's another example of 660 feet, there's 1,300 feet, and you can see these things are very compatible, but this is a photorealism. What we did was we put our panels in this picture, which it's hard to see because it's a half a mile away, there's a block wall, you know, and some of this, too. So, I, I don't think there'll be any visual impact, it doesn't appear that there could be. It's not elevated or anything. So, we had originally proposed panels that would go from six to 12 feet, we've lowered that to six to nine feet, and you'll see that in our zoning case, and you could stipulate us to that. In fact, the nine feet, these panels tilt during the day with the sun, and so most of the day, the panels will be at 6.5 feet. And again, they're going to be behind a block wall, so, and a half a mile away. All right, so, oh, and I guess we're going to run through, okay. So, Florence approved a solar as part, as part of the Montero Plan. Ropes and Ranch has some next to Queen Creek, near the Barney Sports Complex. In addition, and I think Supervisor Goodman, you asked about the preservation of the roadway alignments, we are preserving Judd and Bella Vista for when they go through. And on Judd, we'll have that block, we'll have the block wall. We're, we're building a six-foot subdivision wall at 100-foot setback, so when you drive through this area, it'll look, well, if you see anything, you're going to see a subdivision wall, but you're not going to see all the cars and the traffic associated with homes that would normally be behind a subdivision wall. We, we also, for the neighbor comments, we relocated a transmission route, so it'll go a mile north, it'll be away from any future homes, it'll go on State Land and on the Magma Railroad, and, so you could see where that is. And then we have military support, as I mentioned, we have support from Magma Flood Control, and then we also have so many community support, which is, which is interesting. I mean, the City of Maricopa, the Pinell Alliance for Economic Growth, the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce, and, and some of these, the EDs especially, have indicated that they need green energy in their portfolio in order to keep their ratings with the regulators and the, and the bond ratings. So, they could talk to you more about that. But the other part of it that's so interesting is when they go out and pitch economic development in the county, the, the users are asking for green energy, like, what percentage of your portfolio of power that we're going to get has green energy? And right now, it's not there. So, that's another reason for this, and I think that's helpful for our economic development. We're working with Florence Unified and the CAC on educational programs for the students, and we even have, and this is sort of unprecedented in zoning cases, I think, at least in mine, where we have three, and the late Representative Pratt, Representative Cook, and Senator Shope in support of this project. We've had extensive work in the community, and you can see all these actual businesses that are nearby, very in support. Kirk McCarville, I might mention, is in support, I think he was going to be here, but he got something better to do. But that's important, because that's a, a land broker who's saying it's just not impactful on, on selling homes. It's just, doesn't have anything to do with that, and I think he sent you a letter saying that, so. We have lots of signatures, and just thank you, and we'd save our time for after testimony if there's questions, or if there's questions now. Thank you, and thanks to your staff for all of the work that they've done.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, we're in the public hearing comment, is, anybody else want to speak on this, either for or against?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board of Supervisors, I'm Timothy Lasota. I'm here on behalf of Caballero Development, and we are in opposition to this proposal to change your comprehensive plan. I think that you as a board have to decide, is this an appropriate land use for this area? I know we've, we've talked to you, and we've talked about the, this project being right smack dab in the middle of the growth corridors for this county, and the, the notion that there's nothing going on out there, I think is, is not true. I, I think that you recognize that. I think that the issue is, you know, is this a, an appropriate use for this time? And I think the answer is clearly no. It's, it's going to be a sea of these solar panels. If you drive through on these roads, these connector roads, it, it's going to be, you know, you're going to be driving next to, at best, a block wall for miles and miles, or not miles and miles, but what, however long the project is, however many feet, yards that is, but it, it's gonna, it's gonna cut into this, what's on the comprehensive plan as a, as a major area for, for commercial development in the future. I think it's called, well, I forget the peculiar name that it, it's given under the specific code provision, but, you know, the bottom line here is what's happening, and this business about, oh, the energy's going to stay in California, or stay in Arizona, that's just, there, there's no way to ensure that. Energy goes on the grid, and it can be sold, it can be transferred. You know, we've got an entity here where their manager and only member is, in fact, they are in fact California residents. So, what happens is California basically puts the kibosh on energy production. At, at Planning and Zoning Commission, we heard much testimony about, well, you know, they're shutting down the pipelines, they're shutting down this energy source, they're, they're, you know, they're, they're choking it out here. Well, who's doing that? It's, it's people in California who are doing that, so they get on an airplane and they come to Arizona, and they say, oh, well, we need more energy, so come, come change your comprehensive plan and come give us, give us this, this big solar farm, and all the energy will stay in Arizona. That's just not true. I can tell you as a former attorney at the Arizona Corporation Commission that it's just, it's not the case. So, the applicant didn't really talk much about the economic impact of it, but clearly, the economic impact is going to be derived by people not in Arizona. These units are obviously made somewhere else. The, the taxes this will generate are, are very small. One of the things they mentioned, didn't mention, is when this thing's done, it's going to require three employees to run the entire facility, three jobs. So, I thought they misspoke when they said that at Planning and Zoning, but they didn't. So, I, I think this is a big deal, it's a major comprehensive plan amendment, they have a significant burden of proof to change what, what was approved by the voters before, and I don't think they've even come close to, to meeting it. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the gentleman?
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Thank you. You mentioned that the power is not going to stay in Pinell County, which is a contradiction to what the attorney for the, for the applicant said. Could you expound on that?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Kavanaugh, so essentially, when this, and I know they'll come up here and say that they've got contracts with, with Pinell County entities, and I'm not saying that, that there, there won't be energy consumed by Pinell County entities, but, you know, this, once the energy goes out there, it, it, it's, it's, it's subject to transfer by those entities, and they can transfer it away as they wish. It's, you know, I think we had a discussion earlier with the supervisor about, you know, California sometimes sends their energy to us when they can't use any more energy. I mean, that's just the way it goes. It's like saying, you know, I'm going to spend this dollar in Arizona, and all this money's going to stay in Arizona. I mean, it, you don't know, the, the next person could take it wherever. It's just the nature of the beast, it does not respect state lines.
Thank you. Good. Any questions or comments at this time? Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any more discussion on this item?
I have a question maybe for Steve Abraham.
Okay, good.
Unless, if there's still public comment going on, then we can...
Public comment is still open?
All right, I'll do this afterwards, then.
Hello, Chairman and Superintendents. My name is Dennis Delaney, and I live in Chandler, Arizona. I am the project manager for the organization called Southwest Public Power Agency. It's a joint action agency that was formed in 2014 by a number of smaller entities, there's 23 members of, in the joint action agency, to gain efficiencies and to, and to be able to secure additional resources. So, SPA went out for an RFP in 2020 and 2021, and got literally hundreds of different proposals. We sorted through all the proposals, and we have selected this project and one other for trying to get contracts done. We don't have a contract done at this point, we're still working on it, but several of our members are in Pinell County, there are ED2, ED3, ED4, ED6, and then there's four tribal entities that are also in Pinell County. 56% roughly of SPA's load is in Pinell County, and we are purchasing this for our loads, not to sell in the market, we're purchasing it to serve our loads. We need the resources. This, this concept of, you know, that it's not going to stay in Arizona, it's not going to stay in Pinell County, it's just not right. It's, it's a, it's a farce. We are buying it for our needs today and in the future. We're also buying it for 20 years. So, it is a long-term commitment, a long-term resource for load-serving entities in Pinell County. We would like it built sooner, as quickly as possible, in fact. We could use it right away. I mean, others have already talked about the economic attractiveness of this, of this project, it's a 20-year fixed price cost for us, it's also attractive to our customers, because it helps them deal with their customers who are requesting more and more green power. It's located in a place that makes sense for us, it's not at Palaverdy. We don't have transmission issues trying to get it to our loads that we would if it was at Palaverdy or the other side of Phoenix. I'm disappointed to hear that, I mean, we keep, we keep trying to tell them, this, this is not going to California, and this is being used for loads here. If this project is not proposed, or not approved, we will be going to another one in the same area. We will not be buying it out of California. Happy to answer any questions, but we are in support of it, and we want it built as quickly as possible. We need it built as quickly as possible.
I, I have a, I have a general question, and I don't know if you're the person that can answer it or not, but maybe somebody in this group can. I understand that the power companies, the ED2s, the, everybody, APS, has been given, for lack of a better word, a mandate that a certain percentage of their electricity be produced under green energy methods. Do you know what that percentage is? Does anybody know that that is?
Most of the SPA entities aren't under any formal mandate.
Okay.
But they are electing to do it themselves, and the reality is, the other types of resources aren't very available. So, this is really the, the option, the least cost option, the one that makes the most sense. Our portfolio has gas in it now, it has a lot of hydropower in it, the hydropower is stressed because of the drought.
Correct.
So, we see loads going up, resources going down, existing contracts rolling off, and we need to have something to replace this. It is not a merchant-type procurement on our behalf. It is going to be used to serve load, SPA load.
Okay. Well, that's good. You can certainly just see the hydro, the hydro generation is going to be stressed tremendously here in the future. But anyway, well, thank you for that information.
I have a question.
Okay.
You talk about the rates, so what is the general production cost for solar power for your 20-year period?
We're under an NDA, but, so I gotta be a little bit careful here, but, but the, the price of this Box Canyon was the lowest one we received. It is cheaper than natural gas, once gas gets into the $2, $2.40 cent... It is cheaper than natural gas, once gas gets into the $2, $2.40 range.
$5.
And it's $5 now. It has been lower, it may go lower again, but even at this price point, it makes sense for the economics of the districts.
I guess my question wasn't really, I didn't want to get into your NDA, but comparatively, I mean, cost of electricity for solar is like $0.20 or $0.30 roughly, and natural gas is...
Is $4 to $5 right now.
Okay, so half the price.
Right.
And this is a 20-year period that you can produce this, and gas can do whatever it wants to do.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for this gentleman?
Thank you.
Seeing then, sir, did you want to speak? I think you tried to stand up once before, so I didn't mean to miss you there, but...
Thank you. If I could just, you're not going to need to read it, but I just wanted to give you some, excuse me, first of all.
Your name?
Yes.
Name?
Chairman Miller, member of the board. My name is David LaViss. I'm one of the owners of Cabiero, directly west of this project. A couple of things. I mean, when, there's obviously plenty of solar power that's coming along. I think these utility districts have other options they can be buying it from, so if this doesn't go, we don't have any other options. Secondly, it was really a matter of planning, or I should say, poor planning on their part. It wasn't until, I believe it was the, one of the Planning Commission meetings where they found out that this site was located right in the middle of your regional transportation study, that is calling out for three roads to be brought out to 79 as relievers for traffic in the area. I'll apologize for my cracking voice. I do not do very much public speaking. Some of the solar farms that they've referenced, we went out and looked at those. We were asked to go look at them. Those are behind a six-foot wall and they're four-foot panels. Well, obviously, that is going to block the view from the road. However, if you put a two-story home, you're talking a person standing up at 12, 14 feet. So they are going to look over these walls, and besides, these panels are going to be nine feet tall at some time. Now, I just now have been told that they're only going to be sitting at six feet most of the day. Obviously, they're going to rotate. My point being is the location of this truly is in a location that's going to be being developed into residential. There you've, I'm sure you've been referencing the, I keep forgetting the name of the last sale that went to the state land department, but it was roughly the same size and it sold for $245 million. If you were to build homes on this site, you would be referencing about 4,000, excuse me, 8,000 homes with the same value of land that the state land department would get, and you would also receive approximately $25 million a year in property taxes. There is no property tax on state land. All you're being, all you will receive is tax on personal property, which will be amortized over 25 years and will possibly be accelerated. I can see I'm getting short on time. One of the things that I just came up with, and I didn't have a time to give you this earlier, is this battery storage facility that they're talking about. I went online, took about 15 minutes, and you get page after page after page of fires of lithium battery storage facilities. One of the articles that I've given you references that APS has been having problems since 2006. On November 12, fire destroyed the Scale Energy Facility in Flagstaff, Arizona. In 2019, the APS facility caught fire, exploded, hospitalizing eight firefighters and one police officer. There were two different fire departments fighting that fire, both Surprise and Peoria. Four firemen from each of those departments was hospitalized. As late as July of this year, the Tesla Megapack Battery Facility in Australia caught fire. It took 150 firefighters and four days to put that fire out. People who lived in the area had to shut their doors, close their windows, and turn off their cooling facilities because of the smoke and the toxic fumes that were being generated. In September of '21, the world's largest battery facility caught fire in Mon... Oh, by the way, the Tesla facility, I mean, they are the leaders in lithium batteries, and that wasn't even on the grid yet, and it caught fire. Between, excuse me, September '21, the world's largest battery facility caught fire in Monterey, California, and is still sitting dormant.
Okay, can we wrap it up?
Okay. Between 2017 and 2019, 23 energy storage facilities in South Korea have caught fire. So we don't have the facility to put a fire out. There is one fire engine at Rural Metro in San Tan. I don't know how, if this was ever to catch fire, it could be put out. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for this gentleman? Okay, seeing then, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, it's nice to see you again.
Nice to see you.
Fellow board members, my name is Ken Robbins. I'm the general manager of Electrical District Number Two here in Pinal County. We're at 5575 North Eleven Mile Corner Road. I've been with the district for about 21 years now, and, you know, the board submitted a letter in support of this project, and I'm here in person also to stress our support for this project. The district has been going through a growth spurt here lately. We've had to go out and acquire more power, and in my letter, if you read that, you'll see that we've been having some extraordinarily high power prices that we've had to pay in order to serve our load. I mean, this past June, we had to pay $2,000 a megawatt hour for a brief period of time during the day in June to buy power. And I think for that whole month, you know, power prices were in the $300 range. Typically, during the summer, you can expect power prices during peak periods about $55 a megawatt hour. But with the capacity shortage that's here in the southwest because of the growth, you know, there's a high demand for power, particularly during the summer months. Also, you know, back in February of this year, the district had to pay a substantial amount of power because of where gas prices were. A good portion of the generation that we buy is from a gas plant. And this past February, with what happened in Texas, it drove the price of natural gas up to astronomical prices, and that had an impact on what our gas plant was going to charge us to pay for power. So February was a bad month. The whole summer was a bad month. In fact, over the last three years, we've seen these spikes in prices. These prices are not sustainable. We can't afford to continue to pay those kind of prices without it impacting our customers eventually. You know, one of the things that's also impacting the district is we get a allocation of hydropower. We were informed by a reclamation that in probably maybe 2023, our Colorado River Storage Project power may not be there for us. If that's the case, then we got to go out and replace it with something else. When you look at what alternatives are available today, it's either renewables or it's gas. Gas has its own problems with the price of the fuel that, you know, that, you know, a gas plant has to pay for that price of gas. So we're sort of in one of these situations. Our loads are growing, our hydro is disappearing. We need a source of energy to be able to supply our customers. We have about 6,000 customers. A third of the energy cells that we have go to the farmers to run the pumps, and we know that they're already impacted by last, lack of hydropower, so, I mean, lack of water. So, but anyway, I just wanted to stress that the district is highly supportive of this project. We need that energy, and there are very few alternatives out there for us. So I'm willing to take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Robbins? Seeing none, thank you. Say hi to the missus for me. Okay. All right. Anybody else? Sure, go ahead, come on up.
Chair and supervisors, Jennifer Hall with Rose Law Group. ED3 unfortunately could not be here this morning, but they asked that we read another letter that they wrote into the record, so I'd like to do that if I could. Chairman Miller and supervisors, I apologize that I am not available to be there in person this morning to speak in favor of the Box Canyon solar project due to my own committee meeting. I have asked that this letter be read into the record on my behalf. This project is essential to the future of ED3 and Pinal County. Box Canyon brings numerous key benefits to our ED3 customers and the region, including, one, low-cost power. Box Canyon will help provide low-cost, fixed-price energy to ED3 for next two decades. Ultimately, it is the residences, residents and businesses of Pinal County that pay the cost to purchase energy in their electric bills. The Box Canyon project allows the customers of the local ED electrical districts to avoid higher-priced alternatives and to avoid significant fluctuations in wholesale prices that are becoming more and more common. Two, economic development. Many of the large employers looking to locate in Pinal County ask that their energy supply include a significant portion of clean energy. The Box Canyon project is our first solar energy project and allows us to add to our carbon-free energy portfolio, which includes federal hydro resources. Three, supporting growth. ED3's service territory is growing at a significant rate. Significant development has occurred within the city of Maricopa over the last two years. It is essential that ED3 locate new sources of generation to meet our load growth. Box Canyon is a key part of providing the power we need to keep growing to support Pinal County's future. I cannot stress enough just how important it is to our ability to support future growth that this project move forward with all due speed. Four, mitigating risk. Currently, ED3 relies on natural gas and hydropower sources that both have increasing risks that the Box Canyon project helps us avoid. First, gas prices have exposed our customers to some extremely high prices at times of summer peak. Box Canyon will help us mitigate and avoid part of that risk, better protecting our customers from these swings. Next, the current and worsening drought has resulted in a reduction of the energy we can count on from hydro. In 2022, ED3 will see a reduction of 15% from hydro resources, and projections indicate that the percentage reductions can grow even more in the near future. Five, clean energy. Box Canyon is a clean energy project that will help clean our air in Pinal County. Six, reliability. Box Canyon pairs solar with energy storage to provide reliable source of electricity through key times of system peak. Seven, ratings agencies. ED3 needs to diversify its electrical portfolio to maintain its high bond rate. Adding Box Canyon is an important part of providing what our rating agencies need to keep our borrowing costs at low so that we can contribute, continue to offer low rates to our customers. As you can see, there are numerous reasons to, important reasons that ED3 and local, and the other local electrical districts have pursued the Box Canyon solar project. No other solar project in Pinal County will deliver such a wide array of specific local benefits directly to our growing county. I also have a letter that I'm not going to read, but I ask be included into the public record. It's from a local business. It's Tony Grasso from the local Ace Hardware Store. He also sees the benefit of adding Box Canyon to this area, not only to his own business, but to all the businesses in downtown Florence. So if I may, I would just submit this to the clerk.
Certainly.
Thank you.
That's fine.
Chairman Miller, Mr. Goodman, and supervisors, thank you. My name is Harold Christ. I live here in Florence. I've been developing in Pinal County for most of the last 40 years. I wish I had a dime for every time I've driven up and down 79, watched the National Guard grow, seen what didn't happen on the state land across the street from it because it had been devastated by fires, it had been overrun by the miners who didn't mine in it, but they built their camps and so forth, and as they were mining up in the hills and so forth. That piece of property, I've often wondered, what will happen with that? The vision for it, to think that housing is going to go in there, especially under the circumstances that we face today with water shortages and so forth, and the consuming amount of water that housing gets and the lack of consumption of water that a project like this gets, just seems to make a lot of sense to me. The state land, the money that comes out of state land and so forth, we all know, goes into the education funds and is spread throughout the state. A lot of that will land here in Pinal County. So I see this as a piece of property that is going to sit there fallow for a long, long time unless something like this comes along to get some momentum going for things to happen in and around it. I think the adjoining property that is in opposition to this will find ultimately that this is going to be an asset to them as well. So I would encourage you to vote in favor of this project. This is a really quality, I've met the gentleman representing Bright Knight. Very seldom do you see, or at least in my experience in dealing over the years with different people coming into Pinal County, have I seen somebody that's taken the interest that they have in getting around and knowing and meeting all of us who are involved in the county in some way, and they've taken a major effort in doing that. So again, I would encourage a positive vote for this project. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Harold? Okay, anyone else? Okay. Is that your name?
Good morning, Chairman Miller, excuse me, Vice Chair Goodman and all supervisors. My name's Roger Beatty. I am the chairman, or, excuse me, the director of the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce. I think you already have my support letter in your packet, I hope, but I'm here to confirm that I'm in total support of this project. The Bright Knight people, as Harold just kind of stole my thunder, have been amazing partners. They came in, joined the chamber, and from the very beginning have been reaching out to local residents, businesses, and everybody in the area to find out what they can do and how they can be partners in this town and expect to be for many, many years. I look forward to working with them in the coming years on some projects that we're already talking about, and I expect them to be active members and big supporters of all of Pinal County. I won't go into any of the need because you've all heard that, and I think you probably all know that better than half the people that have been talking probably. So it's a great project, some great people that are doing some great things already in the county, and I also encourage you to vote yes on this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman Miller and supervisors. My name is Danny Court, and I'm an economist with Elliott D. Pollak and Company. I just heard a few comments regarding some of the economic impact. I just wanted to provide some clarification, the main part being that this project would not be exempt from taxes, and the tax generation of this type of project is actually pretty substantial. In our estimation, and again, the proposition here is that $400 million of capital investment in equipment comes and is placed into the county, which will be subject to the personal property tax. So over 35 years, our estimate is $11.4 million in Pinal County-specific property taxes and an additional $10.6 million to the Florence Unified School District. Another part, a point of clarification, that the depreciation is estimated to be a straight-line depreciation, and that means that the property taxes are basically front-end loaded. You will get more property tax in year one than you will in year 35, and we see that as a positive, as opposed to like a master plan community where we're forecasting additional growth in those... growth and those, those impacts eventually come. This starts in year one and, and goes down from there. So of that $11.4 million in Pinell County property taxes, $850,000 comes in year one, and it, and it smoothes out after that. So those property taxes are front-end loaded. You get them in year one and in the subsequent years. And another point of clarification, our, our report does not even try to address the impact of providing that additional electricity and capacity into Pinell County so that there is not a future roadblock to the progression of economic development and growth. If there is no additional capacity in electricity for Pinell County, the forecast for all the potential that Pinell County has would be, you know, would be suppressed. And so our report does not even begin to address any of those types of economic impacts of opportunities lost if this additional capacity doesn't come online. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions for this gentleman? Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, I have a question for the applicant.
For the applicant?
Can I, is that?
Sure.
Ms. Rose, how are you?
You tell me.
So a lot has talked about the battery storage system. I'm looking at this page. It was distributed, it looks like this behemoth of a building. And so, and we're talking about the height of solar panels being seven out of eight feet tall. How big is the storage building? So, you know, this, this thing that'll be out there behind the wall, the battery storage facility, how big is something like that?
Chair and Supervisor McClure, I'm going to kick this to the head of our renewable department, Court Rich, because he spends a lot of time in solar stuff.
So see, you're fine. You don't even have to talk now.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor McClure, thank you for the question. So first of all, I think one of the most important things to recognize is that for the site layout at this location, the batteries will be two miles away from, you know, we're set back, the panels are a half mile from Caballero, Caballero, and the, the area that will have the battery storage facility will be two miles from them. It's set aside for 20 acres that won't be, you know, covered in batteries, but that's the sort of footprint of the area that we'll be working within to place the batteries.
So how tall is something like that, is what I'm trying, so, okay, 20 acres, but is it, you know, three feet tall, eight feet tall, 20 feet tall?
Eight feet.
Eight feet, okay. And it's not one large battery, it's a bunch of sections, is that correct?
Yeah, so, so there are each, each block of batteries is in a self-contained unit that's monitored 24/7. We're talking about, you know, fire issues, if, if that's what we're getting at. You know, we've already met with Rural Metro. We're going to schedule, we're going to have fire training at the site to show the local responders how to deal with, you know, this technology and what the best practices are. Each of those self-contained units has its own fire suppression built into it. So not only is it monitored 24/7, not only is it placed thoughtfully to be away from everything else and the clear zones and all that, but it also internally has its own suppression system that triggers right when anything happens. So there's, you know, a lot of thought and a lot of technology that goes into making sure this is safe. And just as an aside, you know, it's significantly safer than, for example, natural gas, which I know we've had, you know, even a tragedy here locally, you know, which there's, there's all sorts of fire concerns with, with natural gas, but this is significantly safer than, than that technology, so.
So you wouldn't have some large fire spreading everywhere? It would put itself out?
Correct.
In its block, whatever the size that is?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you want to address any of those comments?
Just Chair and Vice Chair, members of the board, I would take any questions, but I wanted to make sure it's very clear that this power is contracted with Pinell County. The, the discussion about going to California is just, doesn't make any sense. The contracts are here, and if you want more detail on how power contracts work and how that, you know, is, is just not true. There's no power going to California. We can have Court come up and explain that if that's interesting to you. I just, I'd ask that, you know, you support the local community, all of the local community, the business development community, the electrical district, which is really the power consumers, which are the residents today, and support this project. I should also mention that if it's approved, Bright Knight is going to have a, for lack of a better term, a job fair because they want to favor local contractors and get them involved in the construction of the project. So more to come on that, hopefully, and then we would be back in front of you for zoning so that you can know the exact details of the plan. Thank you.
I, I do have a question, if I may, because I'm looking at the, the applicant, Arizona State Land Department, and then it says landowner, then it says Box Canyon. How much, I mean, to do anything at the state land is usually, they're pretty thorough about what you're going to use that land for, and, and can you expand on any of that?
It's a great question, Chair and members of the board. Yes, in fact, they are very thorough. That's a good way of putting it. It's very difficult to get state land, you know, to, to agree to sell or lease their land in any regard, and when they do that, they've done it through, they've gone through lots of machinations and process. In fact, the, the attorney for the opposition went and tried to lobby them to change their mind on the lease, and they still didn't change their mind. They said, this is the right use for this land right here, and remember, their, their mandate is to benefit the trust. So their mandate is to have income-producing property to pay for our, our education system. So they've made that decision not just once, but over and over, and then we were asked to reverse it, and they didn't. So I, you know, I don't speak for State Land Department, but they certainly are, you know, supportive of this project in all their actions.
And it's a revenue for the state.
It's a revenue, correct.
For them and a lease.
And, and otherwise, this land would be sitting there for 20-some years. It's not.
And in 35 years, it could be sold.
It could be sold, correct.
Or continued leasing, whatever.
I think that's their plan.
Mr. Chairman, earlier I was going to ask a question. This sounds like the right time to ask it, and if Jordan can't answer it, then Steve. But this is described as an interim project, and when we had the Citizens Commission, one of their questions was, how does this all get decommissioned at the end of its life? And this would be a good question for a lot of these solar projects that are happening all over. When they are at the end of their life, how do they get taken down, taken back, and is there a plan for that in this, in this plan?
Chair and, and members of the board, Supervisor Sertie, I, interestingly, in this particular plan, they have that, that agreement with state land. So they, so they also have a bond at the State Land Department to decommission the project. So at the end of the life, there's, you know, there's a bond set up for the decommissioning. I think in your, you know, in the county and through the zoning, you may also require extra steps like that, but the, but the money is there and it's set aside. In addition, in every one of these projects that I know of, they have a specific, you know, internal operational plan for decommissioning.
Thank you.
Yep. And the state land will be very motivated to make sure it's done.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's why they put a bond up.
That's why they put a bond, yes, exactly.
Okay, any other questions or comments at this time? This is 9A. This is the public hearing portion for 9A. Seeing or hearing none, I'm going to close the public comment period. So, Board's pleasure. Do I have a motion or discussion?
Just a, just a comment, you know, with the way, with, as part of the discussion that's been going on and some of the, the presentations have been made, I think one thing is pretty obvious is that if we could find a way to integrate the residential's communities along with renewable energy or anything of that nature becoming self-sustaining, I think is a pretty clever idea. I don't know why some of the developers out there haven't caught on some of this, especially these large master plans that are put together, it would even be more appealing to some residents that buy in those areas. And so I think, thinking even our, our, and there's many of in this, in this audience that actually are in a position to help encourage that type of stuff when these developments do come, that you're looking at these alternatives to energy that you can integrate into the home. You look at the construction of homes today, even in their roofing, they've started to integrate solar inside the roofing tiles. And so as, as the industry is starting to change, there's many things that we can start to adapt to, to embrace, that we could actually improve our communities and even reduce the cost of energy for a home to heat itself, or, or hot water, or any of things of that nature. There's so much that could be done in the industry itself to really solve some of these issues and problems. So thank you for the discussion because as we look forward, especially for, as I'm looking at this, there's a lot that could be done in the industry that could help move things forward in this area. So with that, if there's no other comments that any of the board members would like to, I'm prepared to make a motion. So with that, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 2021 PZPA-002-021 as presented.
Okay, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Takes us to 9B. So we'll have a presentation by Sageta, and then I'll open the public hearing.
Thank you, Chairman, Vice Chair, and Board Members. Sageta Deoker presenting the next two cases, both of them solar.
Let's just hold up a second.
Boy, Sageta, you, you can clear a room, I tell you.
Sure.
Let them, if we can, get the doors, maybe, because I think there'll be some chatter out there. Okay, Sageta?
Thank you. So the next case is the Sonic Solar Project, PZPA 00321. This is a project that proposes redesignating 1882 acres from medium-low-density residential to green energy production and major open space. The location is southwest of city of Eloy, and the owner is Arnaldo Burrell. Applicant is Benjamin Conore Branch, Sonic Solar Project, LLC. This map shows the location of the project. One can see that. It is in the southern portion of Pinell County, central, south of Eloy, and to the western portion of the city of Eloy. This map shows the comprehensive plan with the existing land use designation showing as moderate-low-density residential, 1 to 3.5 dwelling units per acre, and the proposal is to, for green energy production and major open space. This map also kind of gives an aerial view of multiple parcels that are involved in this, and one can see that it is largely undeveloped land. The Sonic Solar Project existing zoning, one can see that there's multiple zoning on this, these multiple parcels, CB2, CR3, CR2, CB1, CR4, so largely residential zone. This is the aerial again showing the, the large, large agricultural, you, I would say, not developed land. This is the flood map showing the location of the project. One can see that it is tucked in between the triangular portion. What it's trying to show is the watershed boundaries for this area, and it shows the project exactly in that corner, which is triangular portion, larger watersheds going east and west diagonally on the southern side. What it means to this project is it has a large open space which is on the western side, and the eastern side is the connectivity zone that basically is part of the watershed as what I showed you in the earlier map. Again, the open space showing the way the project lies in between that triangular portion, and one can see the, the proposed open space for the Pinell County and the portions of the northeast portion of the parcel, which is being, is kind of chamfered, which is designated as the major open space. This gives you an idea again, at, at the county level, the way the open space has been designated, it's a map for the open space, it follows the watershed movements and the larger plan and the way the location of this air project is shown in the red circle. The proposed land use showing multiple parcels and the way the zoning is. This is a conceptual site plan showing the layout of the solar panels with the way, this is again a draft plan at this point in time, the way the connections are made with the grid layout, and also showing the transmission lines which are connecting, and then the, on the eastern inset of the plan, you can see that going to the transmission station at the bottom. Some site posting photographs of this site, one can see that from the pictures. It's largely weakened, open, and undeveloped land. The current conditions of this is 85% is irrigated farmland with flat topography, no critical native habitats, or no impacts to, to any endangered species. This proposal is generation of 275 megawatts of solar generation, again, 137.5 megawatts of battery storage. That includes the standard infrastructure that is required for a solar facility with PV module, single-axis tracking, solar array, the battery energy systems, and I'm building the associated infrastructure. The timing of the development is to meet commercial operation by end of 2025. The CAC recommended approval, 10 to 2 votes, with following recommendations, ensuring that we, that the applicant conserves the open space corridors that are part of the larger Pinell County open space and trails map. New infrastructure that would be needed for this project to avoid residential zones. The PNC recommended approval with 5 to 3 votes. The applicant, after the PNC meeting, public hearing, did reach out and conduct a second neighborhood meeting to address additional questions and concerns that were raised at that point in time at the PNC meeting. They reached out to regional fire and rescue department and ensured that their questions were answered, and there are more details for this, if you are interested, would be answered by the applicant. There were two more letters that we received in support. One was from the CAC College and the, that they are supporting this project because of the opportunity that they have, Enel Solar has collaborated with them for academic programming in areas for drone technology and other solar energy technology and renewable energy training purposes. The second letter that we received after this present, after we uploaded this on the agenda was from School of Geography Development and Environment, University of Arizona, again, again for the support of this project, especially because of programs surrounding science education and food production and experiment, experimental learning that Enel has collaborated with them to be conducting with that school. I'm open for any questions for this project.
Any questions, Sageta, at this point? Seeing none, I'll open up the public hearing. Is there anybody that wants to speak on this?
There's nothing.
Are you, are you the applicant?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Sure.
We have some presentation for the board as well.
Okay, good.
So, it's getting pulled up, but I can introduce myself while that happens. My name is Celia Howland. I'm a Development Manager with Enel Green Power, North America, and I'm here as well with our Environmental Manager, our Legal Counsel, and Ian Colkins from Copper State Consulting. So Enel Green Power currently has over 60 operational plants totaling roughly 6.6 gigawatts of capacity across 14 U.S. states, one Canadian province. We're excited to bring that depth of experience to Penal County today to discuss and answer any questions about our proposed Major Comprehensive Plan Amendment for the Sonax Solar and Storage Project. So the proposed Sonax Project is a 275-megawatt solar PV project with an attached 137.5-megawatt battery storage facility located on roughly 1,880 acres of land, about 10 miles south of Arizona City. Under the 2019 Comprehensive Plan, the site is designated for moderate-low-density residential. Our proposed amendment would redesignate that property to green energy production, except for roughly 14 acres in the northeast corner, which, as identified by the county, is existing or planned open space and connectivity quarters. We are proposing to redesignate to major open space. We believe this proposed project will bring numerous benefits to Penal County. First, the project will increase property tax revenue. Tax records from the County Assessors Office show that the current property tax revenue from the site is roughly $83,000 per year. Enel's current best estimates suggest that property taxes after construction would average $1.7 million per year over the 30-year lifespan of the project. The project will also bring good-paying jobs to Penal County. We estimate that during construction, it's the, on average, 200 and up to 400 construction workers per month. And then during the operational period, the site would support up to 14 full-time skilled electrical and maintenance workers. The project is also poised to significantly reduce water usage at the site, which is currently used for irrigated farmland, to do so while having minimal impacts to the land itself. As at the end of the project's useful life, the infrastructure would be decommissioned, and the site returned to its current state. The project is poised also to support the health of Arizona communities by supporting utilities that are transitioning away from carbon-intensive sources of power. And then finally, Enel is committed to community partnership programs that we call Creating Shared Value. Solar projects are viable for 30 to 35 years. We want to be a productive member of the community while we are here in your county. And through our Creating Shared Value programs, we build partnerships to support things like infrastructure improvement and economic development and education. At the Sonax Site, we have already begun working with Central Arizona College and the University of Arizona to support their efforts to bring STEM education into local classrooms and to develop long-term training programs to bring local residents into the renewables workforce that is growing in Penal County. The board should have received letters from University of Arizona and Central Arizona College, as Sageta mentioned during her presentation. Enel has focused on finding a site that is compatible with solar PV and energy storage infrastructure. The proposed site was selected for several reasons. We believe there will be minimal environmental impacts at the site. The Arizona Game and Fish Department's environmental online review tool showed no important bird areas or designated critical habitats within or around the site. The site also does not support large stretches of native vegetation, as, again, it is primarily used for irrigated agriculture, so the land is either in crop or left fallow. Second, as you can see from the site photo, the site is quite flat. It has good access roads and existing drainage systems. This is going to minimize the grading and ground disturbance that is needed during construction, cutting down on potential impacts there as well. The site has a high solar resource, which makes solar PV an efficient land use. And finally, the proposed site is compatible with the surrounding land uses. The lands adjacent to the site are either agricultural, rural, residential, or open space. These are land uses not in conflict with and will be minimally impacted by solar development and operations. And on the site itself, there are no other residential, commercial, or industrial projects proposed, so the Sonax Project is not competing with other types of diversified development for Penal County. This is the site plan. Sageta showed it in her presentation as well. It is high-level and preliminary, but I'm happy to take questions on it if the board has any. So in addition to the proposed project's benefits and land compatibility, I'd like to give an overview of Enel's community engagement. Throughout the Comprehensive Plan Amendment process, Enel has actively engaged with the 17 property owners that are directly adjacent to the project site through newsletter mailings, through notices of public hearing, and through hosting a neighborhood meeting. And then as we and the county started to receive feedback from residents of the Silverbell Estates, which, as you can see on the map, begin roughly half a mile to the south of the project's southwestern corner, we started active engagement there as well. We reached out directly to residents who submitted comments to the county, sent residents a newsletter with project information and my own contact information, and we have been and will continue to communicate openly with any residents that are asking questions and offering feedback. Some of the key pieces of feedback we've received so far are visible on the slide. For aesthetic changes, we have heard quite clearly from the public, from the Planning and Zoning Commission, and from the Board of Supervisors, that mitigating changes to the visual landscape is very important for this project. Enel is committed to identifying and mitigating those changes, particularly along Sunland-Gin Road, with an appropriate combination of setbacks, fencing, screening, walls, and landscaping. For property values, we refer to research showing that solar projects have minimal impacts on property values or sales in rural and low-population-density areas, particularly when those projects incorporate the types of setbacks, fencing, screening, and landscaping that we are already planning for this site. For local infrastructure, we again recognize the importance of Sunland-Gin Road to local residents. We have already begun coordinating with the Penal County Traffic Engineering Department on a traffic impact analysis, and with a Penal County engineer on any right-of-ways and any assessments needed for use of local roads and bridges. For public safety, safety is Enel's top priority. We do follow strict industry best practices in installing and maintaining 24/7 fire prevention, detection, and suppression systems. In addition, we have begun conversations with the Regional Fire and Rescue Department about reviewing the project's site plan as development continues to ensure we have the necessary public safety equipment in place, as well as initiating discussions on contracting for services during operations, establishing long-term partnerships in the unlikely event that such services are needed at the site. A letter from Fire Chief Kerber should also have been sent to the Board of Supervisors' fire to this hearing. So looking forward, this is a high-level timeline. The Sonax Project is currently in the early stages of development, so this is subject to change. But in general, the project will have four distinct phases. In the next few years, we'll be undertaking additional project development that includes thorough studies on the environmental, cultural, and engineering parts of the project, as well as, if we are fortunate enough, to receive approval for a Comprehensive Plan Amendment today, bringing the project through the full rezoning, planned area development, and site plan review process, always with open communication with and input from the county and the local communities. We anticipate beginning construction in late 2024. During construction, again, we will adhere to high labor and environmental safety standards, as well as the permitted transportation, construction, and site plans that we will develop with the county and with the community. During construction, we maintain open lines of communication, so there's always information available for the public on the project. Similarly, during operations, we have high labor and environmental safety standards. We intend to maintain good standing with local emergency services, keep the site well-maintained, and keep open lines of communication for the community to get information on the project. And when the project has reached the end of its useful life, Enel will cover the full cost of removing infrastructure from the site, decommissioning the project, and returning the site to its current condition. If at that time we wish to bring proposals for repowering the site, those proposals would go back before the county and before the public for new permits. And then finally, I just wanted to provide a brief overview of Enel's commitment to environmental and engineering due diligence. This is a list of some of the studies that will be undertaken during and incorporated into the rezoning, planned area development, and site plan review processes if the Comprehensive Plan Amendment is approved today. We do Phase 1 environmental site assessments. We do habitat assessments for threatened endangered species. We look for wetlands delineation. We study for cultural resources. We undertake glint and glare analysis. We do hydrology studies in the aforementioned traffic impact study, all to make sure that the project we are proposing is beneficial to Penal County and suitable for the site. Thank you. I'm happy to take questions now or after the close of the public comment period.
I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
So, because you talk about the traffic impact study, and you haven't done that yet, you haven't done that yet, obviously, but there's just one road in and out of there, and it's not a very good road. I can attest to that. So, what, what do you, I mean, with 2 to, you say 200 to 400 contractors there daily working on it? That's a lot of traffic in and out. So, and the people that are impacted down in, down in Silverbell, you know, they won't... How do you, how do you propose to work around that?
So we have had a conversation with the Traffic Engineering Department. They provided us their standards for a traffic impact analysis, which we will use to guide that study going forward. There will be traffic incoming to the site during the construction period. It's a temporary period, but it is Enel's best practice to put a staging area and parking facilities for the contractors on the site. So the only traffic impact will be the use of that road, which will not prevent the access of local residents.
Okay.
Any other questions? I think air quality will be monitoring you as you're building that. I can tell you that for sure. Okay. I think I jumped ahead. I opened up the public hearing. Typically, we always have the applicant present first. So, is there anybody who'd like to speak on this project at this time?
Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for your time. Thank you for being here.
Give us your name and your location.
My name is Linda Camerata. I've been here before. I live at 14585 West Pisces Avenue. My address is Eloy, but I live in Silverbell. I would like to ask, I would like to ask the young lady...
No, ma'am, into the microphone.
I would like to ask the young lady. I heard her mention that there was a second meeting with residents in Silverbell. I would like to know, when was that and why were we not notified? I didn't go to the meeting. So obviously, there was no meeting. I don't want this project for a number of reasons. Because I live there, it's going to impact my life, it's going to devalue my property. I've talked to other people that live next door to these kind of projects. Their value, their value in their property goes down. They can't leave. They still owe a mortgage. I owe a mortgage. This is going to affect me greatly. I have nowhere that I can sell and go to for what I would get out of my place at a reduced rate. I have spoken or sent a letter to Ms. Howland, and she knows how I feel. I really don't want this project because no one has mentioned that this heat that these solar panels make, that they get from the sun, further dries up the little bit of moisture that we have in this state. There will be zero rainfall in our area. With all of the heat created from the solar panels, it throws up and it creates more CO2 and more poison gases in the atmosphere, in the, in the shell around our earth that we're traveling on through space. Nobody thinks about that. All of these solar forms are creating a horrible weather change. Nobody thinks about that. Nobody thinks about the impact of lives five and six years down the road after these solar forms have been created, and they're in working order. What happens to the people? How are they? Are they more ill? Are they getting help? Who cares? And this is my whole point. Who cares about the people that are living next door, six, half an acre, like I'm going to be, from this solar form that's going to go east and west and throw this heat in my, in my home, half a mile away? You're going to tell me that it's not going to radiate? Don't tell me that. I'm not stupid. There's new green energy on the market, and it's coming out. Solar voltage panels China is not even making anymore. So why are they still pushing these things? You know why? It's New Green Deal. New Green Deal comes with a conscience. We are all energetically connected. We are connected to this desk, to this wall, to each other. When you hurt me, you hurt yourself. You hurt the environment. Mother Earth has a way of shaking off and taking care of what creates a blight on her, and this is what's going to happen. We're sitting on volcanoes that are under this state that are still active. You know? What's going to happen?
Can you wrap it up there? You got, your time's up.
Done.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on this item?
Arnold Burrell, Penal and Pima County Farmer. I think that there's a lot of great points that have been brought up, and I'm here to speak in, in behalf of this project, but actually all solar projects. Being a farmer, first and foremost, but also sitting on Trico Electric Board and on the KEDY Board, Central Arizona Drainage and Irrigation District, you know the challenges that us farmers are up against. You know that we're going to be farming 40% of our ground, laying out 60%. You know that those of us that were using surface water thought, well, we're down to our wells, and those of us that weren't using surface water, that just had wells, felt we were immune from this whole situation with the drought. Well, as it turns out, it's far-reaching, and it's going to impact every one of us. We've already been informed of up to 47% increases in our water costs just this year because of what natural gas is doing. We can bridge a lot of that with the use of solar. Of course, we have the peaking period, or the non-peaking period in the middle of the night that we can't bridge yet, but if we're going to depend on a resource that has gone up almost 300% in cost, it's best that we use that resource as minimally as possible, and that would be natural gas. Natural gas is far-reaching. We also get our fertilizers through natural gas. Right now, I can tell you that urea has gone from $475 a tonne to $995 a tonne in 60 days. It's not going to get any better. And because we grow a commodity, I can't pick up the phone and tell China they're going to pay 47% more for my cotton next year. That's just how that ball rolls. We all know that. So we're in survival mode. You guys know that. You've been hearing about this long enough. But this is another piece to the puzzle to keep us in business. So it goes beyond green energy to us. This is survival time for us. So anything that we can do to reduce our costs is, is magnified at this point in time, and solar is becoming a great bridge for us in the agriculture industry. So I'd like you to consider that in your decision-making process as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burrell. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak on this project?
Thank you, supervisors, for hearing this, and my question's already been addressed by, by our supervisor. And I would just ask that you please consider our one-way-in, one-way-out road and examine it, because even though they say it's a short period for construction, that means we can't get in and out. It, it's hard even meeting vehicles. It's a very narrow road, which I'm sure most of you know that. So, thank you all for what you do, and please consider these. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else on this project? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And if there's no other questions or comments at this point, board's pleasure on 9B.
Mr. Chair. Again, you know, looking at the whole scenario of all of this, and, and especially this particular project in the Pinal AMA and, and with some of the water issues that we have in that particular area. And we already listened to from one of the farmers that's in that area. I remember years ago talking to one of the Nevett family's members, and I remember Pops Nevett making the comment that the real value was in his real estate, in the property, not in the farming operation itself. And I think this is a true statement based on the comment by a particular farmer that's been farming in that particular area for years. And so, if there's no other discussion or anything else, I, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 2021, PZPA 00321, as presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Ayes have it. Thank you. Takes us to Item 9C. It will have a public hearing component as well. We'll have a presentation by Cicada and then also the laws, Rose Law Group. Spit that out.
Thank you, Chairman, Vice Chair, both members. Once again, Sangita Deuker presenting the next case. It's PZPA 004-21, another solar project. The proposal, N Value LLC, proposing to re-designate 1667 acres from medium-low density residential, medium-density residential, and high-density residential to green energy production. The area, as mentioned, is 1667 acres. Location is southwest of Arizona City, and applicant is Randy Schrader, N Value LLC. This map shows with respect to the Pinal County where the location of this project is. One can see that it is in the Arizona City, in the central portion of Pinal County. The comprehensive plan land use designation showing four land use designations as MLDR, MDR, HDR, and general commercial. And the proposed land use designation for these parcels, multiple parcels, is to the green, green energy production. The existing zoning for this multiple parcels showing RVP manufactured housing, and one can see the surrounding land use of this location. The state land on the western portion. There is development on the eastern and the northern portion of this project, and the south of this project is the city of Eloy with the state land, and further south is the, the town of Eloy, which is developed. The aerial view showing the largely undeveloped parcels, and one can see the, the shape of this, which kind of is tucked between the developed portion and the undeveloped portion on the, on the western side. This is a regional perspective of the project showing the Arizona City solar project with the transmission lines. There are existing transmission lines of 230 KV going through the project. One is diagonally crossing a couple of parcels, and one going east-west, exactly almost half of the parcel, parcels that are for the project. This gives you a zoom-down view of the same existing utilities. Crossing those parcels are the, are the transmission lines, and the project utilizes this advantage of this. This is a conceptual plan showing the layout of the solar panels, showing a draft layout with a typical section and showing the solar array and on the axis in sections. The current conditions, site is flat, facilitates project without significant grading. There are really no critical native habitats and limited impact to wildlife. Existing high-voltage transmission line connects to the regional electrical grid. There's no extra infrastructure required to create or add those transmission lines. Major open space corridor along one of the northern parcel, portion of the greenwash watershed. There are two trails passed through the parcel along the eastern boundary of the project. The proposal is a generation of, again, 275 megawatts of solar energy, and it has standard things that are required for a solar project, the battery storage system, the O&M building with substations and associated infrastructure, electrical collection systems, and all of those required for that project. The timing of this development is commercial operation date end of 2024. And I would like to show this proposed project and the location with respect to the open space at the Pinal County, county level. And one can see that the green open space that passes through the parcel, one of the parcels on the northern portion. This gives you a perspective of the, this open space that I was talking about, and it is in the northern portion of the parcel, which is the adopted, which is the proposed open space. And there are two, I would say, trail corridors that pass through on the eastern side of this whole project. There's a multi-use trail corridor and an adopted county trail corridor. The CAC recommended approval with eight to four votes, ensuring that conservation of this open space and trails would be taken care of. New infrastructure to avoid any residential zones, and ensuring that fencing and visual buffers on the north and eastern portion of the boundaries are taken care of. Continue working with communities along those project development. PNZ recommended approval with eight to zero votes, and I'm open for any questions.
Any questions for Cicada at this time? If not, we'll have the Rose, Rose Law Group do the presentation, then we'll open up the public hearing for this portion. Thank you.
Chair and Vice Chair and members of the board, for your records, I'm Jordan Rose with Rose Law Group. And with me today is Janine Mulleada, the project manager for Pine Gate, and Bridget Lackman, the Development Assistant, and Court Rich from my office in Jennifer Hall. I have a full presentation, but I know you've now talked about solar ad nauseam. So, I'll just summarize and then certainly ask for any questions or if you want me to go into the full presentation. Here in this particular case is located in the Pinal AMA, which makes it, because of the water situation, very difficult, if not impossible, to develop as, as a housing development for the, at least, short-term future. We have worked with the fire department in the area and feel comfortable with, and I, and they're, you know, they, they seem very supportive of what we're doing. We're going to provide training. We also worked with, I think, Supervisor McClure. Thank you for your conversation right at the outset, saying, you need to increase these setbacks. You need to put up a block wall. And so, our setbacks are 120 to 150 feet. We have a six-foot block wall. And then you also asked us to lower the panels. The panels are lowered to six to eight feet. We have no opposition that I'm aware of, and we would ask for your support. Or if you need more details, I'm happy to go into it, because I can talk for a very long time, as you noticed.
Supervisor Goodman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm looking at your numbers here. And so, that, what was it, 275 megawatts? Is that what it was? 74,000 homes?
Chair and, and Vice Chair, right now, the property is actually zoned for about 5,000 homes, but because of the water situation, it couldn't be done right now anyhow.
No, but I mean, it will.
Oh.
Yeah.
Sorry.
That's all right. That's all right.
Okay. Sorry, I, I was on a different wavelength. Yes, it can power 75,000 homes. Correct. Thank you. Thank you, Court. That's why he's here. You earned it. Yes, that's correct.
That's a lot of houses.
That's a lot of homes.
And so, even the other projects that we've been looking at are speaking along the same language, those type of megawatts. So, that amount, amount of power is being generated off of this. Yeah. Wow, that's a lot.
Okay. Any other questions? Supervisor Kavanaugh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had the discussion about another solar project and where the power goes. Curiously, where did the power go on this one?
Chair and Supervisor, this power is being contracted in the state of Arizona with the utility.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Seeing none, I'm going to open up the public hearing on 9C. Does anybody from the audience like to speak on this item?
Hi, my name is Chantavia Rogers. Those manufactured homes that she referring to, those are our homes. Those will literally go through and be through our housing if y'all let this go through. This will literally affect our property and everything that we does. I worked very hard to come to my house. For this to happen, it will literally affect everything that I've worked for her for the last 10 years. Is that fair for us, because y'all want to change things around? That it's going to affect the things that we worked hard for? Y'all have to realize, this is not just impact small things. This impact individual housing, families, and everything else with these things when y'all do it. That's all I had to say.
Is this going through housing?
Chair and Vice Chair, we, we can meet with her afterwards to show her where this is, but it is not, first of all, we're not proposing any manufactured homes, and we're not putting it through any homes. There'll be a block wall 150 feet back off of the property line. So, it's flat land there, so I don't think that'll even be visible. The panels are six to eight feet, so they're behind a block wall. And Jennifer Hall can, will meet with you and walk you through it. So, thank you.
Okay. Public, public hearing is still open. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this thing? We close the public hearing, and the board's pleasure.
Mr. Chair.
Chair.
I move that we approve Resolution Number 2021-PZ-PA-004-21, as proposed.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Ayes have it. Thank you. Brings us to 9D. And then we'll have a presentation by J.D. Rulon from next, oh.
I think it's me.
Okay.
Oh, is it?
Oh, your name is on there as well, so we're good.
I'm 05. I would do in 04.
We're on 5 now.
We're on 5, okay.
Yeah. 9D.
9D, yes.
Okay.
For the supervisors, this is the chair. My name is Evan Evangelopoulos with Pinal County Planning, and I will be presenting the Eloy Solar, again, solar facility south of Eloy, PZPA 00521. The facility is about eight miles west of Picacho Peak and about eight miles south of the downtown of the city of Eloy. It is about 1264 acres. The presentation shows 1251. We have corrected the acreage since then. There was, there's an updated legal description regarding that. There were some difficulties on the field. So, the owner is John and Melinda Donley Trust. Agent is SWCA, and the applicant is Anthony Pedorni of Boulevard Associates. There you go. You can see where it's located. It's in the south, southwest, I would say, south of area of the county. This is the properties that we are discussing currently. They are a mixture of, of different land use designations, medium-density residential, high-density residential, commercial, and public facilities. It will all, the proposal is to change it all to green energy production for the solar facility. This is the area again. Here, you can clearly see that it's mostly agricultural right now. Pretty remote. There are a few scattered residences in the area that are excluded from the project. And the transmission lines run to the south, about a mile south of the project, and there's, and there's a substation over there where the batteries will connect to. This, again, the project. You can see the southwest corner of the project, that little rectangle, that's the battery area. This is an aerial, it's not an aerial, it's a Google Earth perspective view of the project looking south. These are some images. Right now, there's plenty of cotton fields there. I shouldn't say plenty, there's cotton fields there. And it's pretty flat. This is looking north on Sunshine Boulevard, which is the main axis to the project. Looking south on Sunshine Boulevard. Looking east, that's Picacho Peak to the east. And looking west, again, you can see the agricultural fields. So, currently, it's low-density residential. There's no critical native habitats and no impacts to endangered species, although there is a monarch, it's on the monarch butterfly corridor, and CAC addressed that, that issue. The solar generation is about 350 megawatts. It includes the, the panels, the energy storage, the, the batteries, and the connection to the genti generation, intertie transmission line. The timing of the, of development, it's three phases. Each would be about 12 months. The first month, the first phase was 12 months to begin in 2023. But I think there are some changes on the, on the first phase. The applicant will talk about it. So, the CAC recommended approval, eight to four, and they brought us some very interesting points. First of all, they liked the decommissioning plan that the applicant was proposing, and they want to, they wanted to make sure that they maintain that decommissioning plan throughout the project. Also, there's the mention to the monarch butterfly. The applicant works with the county staff to select appropriate flora to support butterfly migration patterns. And I want to mention to you that solar facilities overall, we try to recommend, suggest seeding underneath with native plants. Of course, native perennials to help our bees. Sometimes solar facilities have honey production. In this case, we have to make sure that the, the appropriate species are planted for the, for monarch butterflies, which is usually milkweed here in Arizona. Now, the, the other issue is adjacent homes. As far as I said, there's some sparse residences around. CAC wanted to, the applicant to provide a landscape buffer zone between the project and any adjacent homes, and work with the homes to the north or their brokers to address any concerns that they might have. Another very interesting issue that was brought up was about the Kit Peak Observatory. To contact them and confirm that there's no impact, no impact, impact from reflections will be on their observation. So, that'll be a very interesting report to see also what Kit Peak would have to say about it. So, the PNZ recommended approval, seven to one. And that's the end of my presentation. Any questions?
Any questions?
Just one observation. I mean, I know, I've been to Kit's Peak and of course you're there in the middle of the night. So solar panels don't have a whole lot of reflectivity at night, you know, so I can't imagine it'd be a problem. Then they do, they do have a solar telescope up there, but, but I mean, Kit's Peak is like, so? And that's just an interesting observation is all.
Be interesting to find out what they say. So that ends my.
On a real clear day, you can see it from just about any place in Pinellas County. You can see Kit Peak, it's interesting. Okay, any other questions for Evan? Okay, presenter? From Next Era? Next Era?
Yes, sir, thank you. Next Era.
Okay, Next Era.
Well, they're pulling up the brief. My name's J.D. Ruline. I'm a project director based in Juno Beach, Florida. So, yep, another one. And I'll be talking about Eloy Valley today. But again, chairman, vice chairman, members of the board, I appreciate your audience today. I understand that I'm the last one to go. I'll try to get through it quickly and.
We still got more going.
Okay. Well, I'll try and be as respectful of your time as possible and not hit on several things that we've already hit on with the solar industry. That said, I do think there are some important points I will continue to make that I believe have been left on the floor as inquiries today.
Chairman, board members, it's going to be just a minute. The system is pulling the actual presentation up.
If you need a break, take it.
If it pleases the supervisors, I'm okay to keep going. There are just a couple of slides, but again, I'm talking to them. But if it pleases the supervisors, I continue to go to the chair and vice chair.
There we go. Getting there. Supervisor McClure is walking in now, so.
The first three slides of the deck are overviews of my organization. So I can get through those, but if you prefer, I'd wait, I can.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, chairman. Again, I'd like to start the presentation with a background on Next Era and what differentiates us from other solar industries that are here in Pinellas County. Our parent company, Next Era Energy, is a Fortune 200 currently 166 in the Fortune 200. And we are the largest renewable energy provider in North America. Next Era is comprised of a strong business supported by common platform that includes Next Era Energy Resources as well as Florida Power and Light. Florida Power and Light is the largest utility company in North America, if not the world. My company, Next Era Energy Resources, is an American-owned and operated company with more than 26,000 megawatts under operation and net generating capacity. At the end of the year, we'll be at 30,000. We believe in strong, we believe strongly in grid resilience, gentlemen, and power diversification, which is why we are also one of the nation's largest operators of nuclear-fueled energy. Am I controlled now? Okay, thank you. And again, we are number one generator of renewable energy from the wind and sun in North America. Now to Arizona. We have approximately $1 billion invested in utility-scale renewables in the state of Arizona. Our subsidiaries own and operate two wind farms, three solar farms and three energy storage utility scale sites at a portfolio of private and distributed generator and solar facilities. We have separate projects under early to mid-stage development as well. We have contributed 1.3 million in property taxes to local counties and cities, 1 million in annual land payments to landowners and approximately 1.5 million in annual payroll for locally hired solar and wind technicians and site managers. These are projects that are in the ground and under operation. They do not consider the economic benefits of projects that we are currently building right now. I'd like to spend a little bit of time on this slide because I believe a couple of questions have come up over the previous three requests that I think showcase some quantitative data as to why we are here today. Wind and solar are low-cost sources of energy that are highly competitive with other forms of power generation. An analysis, an analysis conducted just last week by the Wall Street Journal labels utility-scale solar as the cheapest source of energy in the United States due to rapid technological advances over the past five and 10 years. I'd like to point out that that figure stands both with and without federal tax credits to the energy industry. Pinellas County is leading the state in furthering Arizona clean energy goals. I'll let you take a look at the ACC's proposal of reducing carbon emissions by 50% by 2032, which I believe is what the chair, vice chair was asking about earlier. APS is committed to supplying 100% carbon-free by 2050. SRP is committed 90% by 2050. TEP is committed by 80% by 2035. That in conjunction with the planned closure of the Navajo Generating Station, Pinellas County continues to position itself as one of the primary fillers of that gap. So why are utility companies doing this? I think a false assumption would be to say that this is a regulatory driven by DC or state regulations. But the fact of the matter is that clean energy is now a market-driven force because it provides cheaper energy that makes it to the consumer for a cheaper ticket at the end of the month. Commercial consumers are required to move to clean energy, both private and public alike. Shareholders with the ESG movement are demanding of their companies to move to clean energy. Those clean energy to lower costs then have to move to areas that have adequate supply of clean energy. Pinellas County and Arizona continue to showcase as one of the top states in the nation to do that, which then attracts large commercial technological companies and will then increase tax base as well as job revenue. I'll hold there before I get to the project because I, because I know several of those questions did pop up throughout the meeting this morning that I did want to touch on why Arizona, why Pinellas County, why renewable energy and why now? Okay, into the Eloy community benefits. Next Era is committed to this project and wants to maximize the benefits as we do on every one of our projects to the local and regional communities. Some community benefits echo a lot of the things that you've heard this morning. 35 million in county tax revenues to Pinellas County schools, roads and district and law enforcement authorities over the course of the 30-year project. Local employment opportunities of 100 jobs per year for at least three years while this is being built. That then trickles down, increase in local business activity to supply materials for construction and operation for a three-year period. Increase in worker activity, which will support local services, industries, hotels and restaurants, retail stores and suppliers. Next Era continues to be committed both in Pinellas County and Arizona in building academic, civic and environmental partnerships to advance research, build robust talent pipelines and provide advisory support and serve the unique needs of each individual community as we know that no acre of dirt is the same. I can comment and provide examples of each one of these that we've done for our, for our projects and are happy to send to the supervisors some examples. Okay, so why I am here today. Eloy Valley Solar and Storage is located on approximately 1,300 acres of private land at the corner of Green Reservoir Road and 11 Corner Road, 11 Mile Corner Road. It is approximately six miles dead south of Eloy. If you get on South Sunshine, cross I-10 and then continue to head south on South Sunshine, you'll run right into our property. When completed, the project would generate a maximum capacity of 350 megawatts of electricity to the regional power grid operated by WAPA, and the project will be built in three phases. The first phase in conversation today will be 150 megawatts. When completed, Eloy Valley Solar and Storage will have the ability to power over 200,000 homes. So for our Eloy Valley siting criteria and why we selected this site, oftentimes the question comes up as to why here? So there are a few things to consider when we cite these projects. Eloy Valley obviously hits on all of these, specifically the Donley property. The existing transmission infrastructure, as was spoken about by staff. The existing road infrastructure, which is abundant on this specific site. Requested land use is consistent with the current zoning of Pinellas County, which we believe it does. The location is relatively remote. And after spending several different days on ground here, I can assure you that it, it does in fact meet all of those. And finally, as good stewards of the environment, there are no significant environmental constraints in the project area. We will continue to commission environmental surveys as we progress to zoning. But of the twos, of the two environmental surveys we have incurred thus far, we have found no, no negative environmental effects. Here's a site plan of the proposed project. The project would include approximately 900,000 panels and 1,300 acres. The red outline or pink outline is the project boundary. The project will also include one collector substation shown as a red dot on the overhead and potentially a 230 KV genti line shown in the green dotted line down to ED5. We've also understood in conversations with APS with, again, you know, we want to be competitive here, but we also understand that an APS 230 KV line is lined directly to our west, so we may not be going to that ED5. But again, this will be coming in the site plan as once we begin to bid this project. But no genti may be required. That is a possibility here, gentlemen. Again, moving through this quickly because I don't want to echo a lot of the things that were said today. Creates no greenhouse gases or air pollutants. It's no water use to generate electricity. Creates no waste byproducts when generating electricity and the list continues to go on. I would like to talk about the taxes on the communities as we, as we will continue to footstomp those as a primary benefit for those local communities that otherwise have a project that, that does not lean on any of the natural infrastructure or, you know, professional infrastructure of that specific town. Okay, so we will, we held two neighborhood meetings, one virtual Zoom webinar and one in person at Troy Thomas Community Center. The following are the concerns and the comments that we received. We believe it's important to be transparent of the opposition that we do receive within the community. Some of those include property value decline, electric magnetic field or EMF posing health standards, heat island effect, visual impact, replacing agricultural use, a fire hazard associated with the batteries, construction noise and dust and decommissioning. I'm happy to touch on each one of these if the commission pleases. However, I would like to say that Next Era has conducted a six-month survey and there has been no change in the past six months to any property values that currently border operational solar farms. In fact, the properties that have been on sale, and this is all public knowledge, things like Zillow and other, land brokers pull this up, are selling for at or above asking price. So we ask you to look at the data that we continue to see on the land value that borders these. And there are, there are folks that are continuing to buy that, those properties. On the fired hazard piece, I'm happy to talk a little bit about what happened with the APS battery in April of 2019 if the chair would like me to.
I'm good. You have more questions on that?
I'm curious, what happened to the battery?
Sure. Sorry. Yeah, so I'm happy to reference the McMillan Report that is a third party that was done by a PhD on APS's 2019 explosion. Basically, a third party was asked to come in and take a look at this and he essentially came up with the reasons why this happened. There are five contributing factors that happened to this. Things like not having the right fires or not having a correct fire suppression system, not having barriers or air gapped between the batteries, not having the right temperature gauges there. And then also the fact that these LG Chem batteries that come out of South Korea were then recalled less than six months later after the fire. I'd like, you know, I'm happy to say today that Next Era, Next Era Energy has never contracted with LG Chem and will never will. We put Samsung batteries on, which are considered one of the premier and safest batteries. We also do other, other batteries that are also sourced from South Korea. But we have a four-point plan, which we are happy to share with neighbors, communities, as well as the chair and the vice chair and supervisors if you'd like. And I can kind of go deeper into it is why we, what we took out of that report and how we have since designed our fire suppression methods to ensure that nothing like this happens on one of our properties.
That's great, thank you.
So here's our timeline, gentlemen. Again, our final site plan in 2024. And then we would like to hit construction as well in 2024. Overview of our project construction. So install fence for safety. We'll continue to assess and build roads as this is a permit that we will continue to go down. Again, as you gentlemen understand that exact property, there are quite a few hardball roads and wonderful positioning for this specific property. We'll install the solar arrays, then the transmission lines, then the battery pads and then test and commission the completed arrays hopefully by 2025. Depending on your questions, chairman, vice chair.
Mr. Chair, just one quick question. So I noticed you're, you're talking about PV panels, then you had the other mirrored panels. You're showing those. This is, is this a mirrored system?
PV panels.
PVs, okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions of this gentleman? Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A comment from a CAC member, I'm trying to follow it. It said the applicant had a portion of the parcel that they did not want to remediate and is not clear what the remediation was for as to why this was avoided. Can you speak to that?
Supervisor Kavanaugh, I can. I'm going to go back to the site layout because I believe, and I would like to bring this up anyways because I had a fun day yesterday trying to get to it. So I'd like to show the center, take your attention to the center of the site plan. You see a natural square, which I believe is what the CAC was talking to us about. In fact, we are, you know, very much trying to get ahold of the landowner. Personally, I can attest to letters, phone calls. I was on the property yesterday, driving around in my vehicle, beeping the horn, standing out there waving as many times as I possibly could to get the attention. We've contacted neighbors. I went as far as contacting the sheriff's department to try and get ahold of this gentleman, who I believe by the name of Kenneth Stone, and was told not to venture on the property alone. It is in fact surrounded by Constantino wire and a locked fence. And it's just not, you know, a piece of property that, you know, you should be intruding upon because of the wishes of that specific owner. We are happy to start conversations with this landowner to offer a potential purchase of his property or a potential lease, whatever his preferences are. But supervisor, we're having a large amount of difficulty getting ahold of him.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. I'll open up the public hearing portion of this.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this item? We're at 9D on the agenda. Seeing none? I'll close the public hearing. Board's pleasure.
If there's any more questions.
Okay. I, I, nobody, no, no public comment, so I don't know if there's anything to ask of you.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Item D Resolution Number 2021-PC-PA-005-21 as presented.
Thank you. Do I, I, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. What? Did I, what, what did we miss?
No, we didn't miss anything. I just, I, I need to mention that the legal description has changed. So the resolution that you're holding in your hands right now, there is a little bit of a difference. Now we'll be printing it out.
Counselor, what do I need to do here?
Chairman, if we can just change the motion to include the change to the legal description.
To the current or new or proper legal description? Can you, can you?
Is that sufficient to say the, the new or proper legal description?
Exactly. I would suggest that we pre- remove the item with the addition, you know, with a corrected legal description to be provided. Excuse me, Evan, has that already been provided to the clerk's office?
It's ready to print.
So you do have the correct.
Yes, I have the correct one, yes. And I, I have to go print it.
Okay. I won't take the time to figure out the legal description today on my own, but we have the correct legal description is what I'm, understand.
Yes.
And that is being, as I'm understanding, is being delivered to the clerk's office today?
Yes, absolutely, yes. We were waiting to see if there will be any discrepancy with the, with the applicant today, with our legal description, but it's fine.
Okay. So the document I sign will have the correct legal description, is what you're telling me?
Yes.
Okay.
Supervisor Kavanaugh.
So, Mr. Chairman, point of order, did we take a vote that we need to rescind now?
Yes. I believe.
We did. Did we take a vote on that item?
I said it.
I thought we had a first and a second.
We have a motion and a second, but we did not take an actual vote on the item.
Okay.
Okay. So we're going to rescind the motion?
So, Mr. Chairman, I move to rescind the motion on the, on the resolution and make a new motion in the.
And the new motion is to approve item D number 2021-PC-PA-005-21 to include the change, which would reflect the proper legal description to be provided at a later time.
You're good. Have a second? I have a second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. I just haven't, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, brings us to item number 10, which is a public, has a public hearing component as well. It's a discussion, approval, disapproval of resolution 2021-PC-PA-20, 020-21. Okay, so we'll have a presentation by Gilbert and then we'll have the applicant, Rose Law Group, and then we'll open up the public hearing.
Good afternoon, give me one minute.
And, and for everybody's edification, this is actually 10, 11, and 12 are all in conjunction with each other if I read this correctly. So the, so the presentation is basically for 10, 11, and 12?
Yes, sir. They'll be presented all together.
All together?
Yes, sir. So my name is Gilbert Leguene. I'll be giving you the presentation. I'm a senior planner with Penalt County. I'll be giving you the presentation on these, these next three cases. The proposals that we have today are for a non-major comprehensive plan amendment that's to redesignate 36 acres from suburban neighborhood to community and community center, land use designations to community center land use designations. The next proposal is zone change and it's requesting approval to rezone only 29 of the 36 acres from CB1, which is a neighborhood commercial, to a multiple residence MR zone. It's to allow development standards for multi-dwelling residential community. And the last request is for the PAD for the 29 acres. It's called Village at San Tan Overlay. The location is, or the subject site is that's south, south of the southeast corner of the intersection of Gansel and Ironwood Road and Hashknife Draw, Agarve Road in San Tan Valley, Penalt County. The applicant is MC Management LC and, sorry, the landowner, the applicant is Jordan Rose with Rose Law Group. So the first map we have in front of you shows you the location. The star is the area that we're talking about. It's within proximity to Queen Creek, to the north of Penalt County. The next one gives you that red triangle piece there is, is the subject site. Excuse you more perspective as to the area in question. Queen Creek is essentially the border that goes to the north and kind of to the east there. And you can see how Gansel kind of cuts to the north as well. This is another aerial map. Once again, shows you the roads in the area. It also shows you subdivisions in the area, which are quite a few. They're to the north, they're west, east, they're all over the place in regards to this project with more to come. Here's an area map, gives you more detail, closer, a close-up view of the project in its entirety. And this shows you all 36 acres of the property and it's currently commercial, CB1. It's local neighborhood commercial. Now, this image here shows you the comprehensive plan. So it shows you what it is today. The property kind of has a piece that goes straight down. The yellow is a suburban neighborhood. The red is the community center, as you can see on the left. On the right is what they'd like to change it to per this application, have the entire piece as community center. Zoning, currently, the whole piece is, is, is commercial. And with this zone change, they would change it to MR for multiple, at least for 29 of the acres, they would change it to MR to allow multiple dwelling units on the site. This is a site plan of the subject site and it shows you kind of how it works. It's got two entry points, one to the north, actually, I'm not sure if that's north, but one to the, one entry kind of to the main arterial, then one off to the side. The one off to the side, I don't have a pointer, but, does this work? No, that's fine. Maybe this works. That's okay. So the second entry point is off to the side. That, that would be more commercial that would develop later on after this project went forward. So that would be their second entry point and it, you go north on this to, to get access to the main roadway here. But as you can see, there is an area that has easement there to kind of, I believe it's the north, I guess west. And you can see they have trails that we have, we asked them to put in. There is plenty of open space. They're, they're going to put in the 18% open space that we asked for. This features a pool and several amenities. It also has a dog park off in the corner. So it's, 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 it's a nice subdivision for, in a single level. So it's, 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 it's been walled that out, so it's, it's a nice piece. Now, here's a, here's the actual, one of the signs that was on the site. But here's an image to the north. You can see a lot of vacant land, our homes out, out in east direction of these, of these pictures. This is an image showing the property to the south. This one's to the east and then this one's to the west. So staff, when this first came to us, staff had sat down for a pre-ad meeting and told them from the very beginning that the comprehensive plan, which is actually the, our San Tan Valley area plan, it actually has an area designated with two separate designations. So a third of the property is a suburban neighborhood. The other part is the commercial portion of designation. Now, this type of use could be rezoned if the whole piece was for the commercial center, but it's not. There's been some discussion on how that happened and why it happened, but the fact of the matter that it wasn't done, so per the Arizona Growing Smarter statutes, we're required to follow what the comp plan and the general plan say. In this case, we have comprehensive plan in the county, general plans are in the towns and cities. So this is why staff has voted against the project. Another thing to think about in regards to this project is there's going to be a loss of commercial opportunities if this goes forward. We did have some, some comments from the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I will say for the record that I believe what was submitted to you was a resolution for this case that says it was nine to zero. That's incorrect. It was six to two. The correct documentation was given, it's just the wrong one was uploaded. So I apologize for that. But we had six members of the planning commission that were against this and two that were for it. So the one thing that came out of that conversation with our P&amp;Z Planning and Zoning Commission was that there, there was quite a few houses in the area and this is just going to add, add to that. Now, staff will say that multifamily and commercial projects both bring lots of traffic, but the commercial will bring you more uses that don't exist here today. There's quite a few of commercial pockets that exist in the area, but it, it was, it was obvious that some of the commission members did not want the increased housing product that was going to be brought by this. And they wanted it to be, stay commercial. We did have a member of the public that showed up, that voiced his opinion that they were looking, they were hoping that this would not turn into homes, but turn into offices, medical offices of some type. So once again, we had six to two. They denied the three applications. We'll have three separate public hearings, one for each. But staff has, has voted, or should say recommended denial, and that's what the P&amp;Z also recommended. So if you have any questions for staff, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Gilbert? Supervisor Kavanaugh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You mentioned that we were required to follow, I just caught that, the, this growing smarter initiatives or guidelines. Could you expound on that?
Yeah, this, this set of laws was developed several years ago to help cities, towns, and counties to give some direction to, to not just those that make decisions, but the staff that works for them. And it, it basically, it asks us to, one, we get an applicant that comes to see us in regards for a zone change. We have to look at what the comprehensive plan slash general plan says. It's voted on every 10 years, updated. So it's, and it's approved by resolution, so that's why it changes. But that being said, I mean, this is exactly what staff did, is we looked at this, not just looked at the, because the, the comprehensive plan is, is a guiding document for staff to look at. But on top of that, we also look at what's already there. And it's staff's opinion, there's already a tremendous amount of homes in the area. One of the, the commission members said the same thing, that he's not looking for more, more homes. He wants more services. So that's how that typically works, is we're supposed to look at the comprehensive plan and use it as a guiding tool to make staff recommendations. We don't approve, that's what the board does.
And I have a follow-up question. These are, this is high density. Are there other high-density homes in the area?
In this area, no, but I believe there's Bella Vista and Gansel, which is real close. They have an apartment complex. There's also the, so yes, there are other apartment complexes. This is a little different because it's a one-story, so it's more of a hybrid. And this is more designed to, to more act and feel more like actual houses versus the, you know, your two and three-story apartments. So in that aspect, this is a little different, but we do have other projects that are, that are being actually built as we speak within proximity. And we have a couple other projects that are in the works that you'll be seeing soon that are right there by the Walmart off of Hunt Highway and Gary. But we do have quite a few applications, I'd say at least eight, that we're reviewing for, for this type of housing product that's coming in. Staff will say that those one-story type of product gets a little less attention, as you can see from this application. They only had, I'd say it was one actual letter of non-support and we had a couple people call in, but in regards to other ones, we have a lot more. So this is more, better product in regards to staff when it comes to people being upset with it. But most, at the end of the day, it's mostly changed. They don't like the change. They, they didn't, they, they think that it's too aggressive when you have apartments, but it's been said to us through my years of working here that this is a product type that's needed, just in the right location.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Gilbert, you may have said it, but I, I don't see it. What is the density?
What they're asking for is, I believe, eight, eight to 12, but I believe what's there is.
Yeah, I'm, I'm concerned, what?
Eight and, it's eight and a quarter.
Eight and a quarter?
Quarter per acre.
No, but what is it current? Is?
It's approved already for eight to 16.
Okay, it's approved for eight to 16.
Already?
Yeah, because, yes. And it's, I guess it is.
And, and they want to go 8.5.
Right.
Which is within the parameters of what it's already designated.
Correct. And it's not far from, from, you know, it's, once again, it's not.
On the low end of what it's designated.
Correct. But yeah, it's not a bad product. It's just staff is going by what the comprehensive plan is guiding us to do.
Okay. Any other questions for Gilbert? And then we'll have the Rose Law Group present. And then I will open up the public hearing.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Gilbert. And chair and vice chair members of the board, I'm Jordan Rose with Rose Law Group. And I'm here with Shelby Duplee, who's the president of Land Development at Empire, and Jennifer Hall, our planner. And I appreciate that, you know, the comprehensive plan is a fluid document. You just changed it, I think, four times in the last, you know, few hours. And this is a really a minor change. This is actually a cleanup. And so I think I first should say that what we're doing here, and what I didn't present unfortunately at the planning commission, was that we are right-sizing the commercial. I think I left the impression that we were diminishing the commercial entirely and we're not doing that. So maybe, okay. First of all, let me talk about the comprehensive plan. Right now, most of the property is approved for the 11.5 units per acre of the residential, okay? The San Tan area plan has it shown as eight to 16. So we are right in the middle. We're doing what we do. That pink part is most of the property. Okay, the 12 acres on the, the yellow is, is just a mix-up because they didn't consider property ownership when they did the mapping in 2018. And so you can see that property in the yellow is a lower-density housing product. So we're not, we're not shifting, we're just trying to make all of the property one designation. And that designation allows for commercial and for multifamily. So, and if, and to say, to even go further, the planning commission, I completely confused them because if what they were saying is we want more commercial, they should have approved the comprehensive plan adjustment because right now that yellow 12 acres can't do commercial. So in any case, this is a cleanup. So we're just adjusting the 12 acres. That's the first vote that we were asking for. The property sat vacant for 15 years. You can see in the area, it's, first of all, it's very oddly configured for 36 acres of total commercial. And I'm going to show you a little bit more about that. But in addition to that, that's just too much. 36 acres, well, first of all, there's 300 acres of commercially zoned property within the neighboring two-mile area. You can see there's a major power corner just to the south with 82 acres. But in addition to that, 36 acres, we're just looking to do nine acres of commercial, which is an appropriate-sized commercial. If you look around the state and in Penalt County and in the East Valley, you can see nine-acre commercial sites all over the place. There are big box, some big box stores, there are grocery center anchored centers and those kinds of things that are needed in this area. That's what a nine-acre commercial looks like. And then the rest of it will be this multifamily, one-story residence to support the commercial in the area. And you can look at this, if we were to keep this as all 36 acres of commercial, it would just be virtually impossible. I mean, Scottsdale Fashion Square is 33 acres. You know, Bass Pro Shops is 36 acres. And not to just talk about these giant commercial opportunities, but the commercial, state of commercial has changed. I mean, we get a lot of stuff on the internet now, so it's not, you're not building these giant malls and these things. It's, it is what it is. But in any case, we want to right-size it. In addition to that, to say, oh, keep this 36 acres commercial is kind of crazy because it's got terrible accessibility. There's not a good corner. Look at that. There's no corner. It's not on a hard corner. And then it's on railroad tracks. So it's just, there's no commercial opportunity in this particular property. That's why I think the comp plan was looking at it as commercial or multifamily. And so we're just splitting that up in, in the size that would make sense. We're right-sizing the commercial. So I, we talked, thank you Supervisor Goodman for your leadership on this. We talked a lot about how to make the community even better. We have 40% open space and this is just on the residential portion. You can see abutting the railroad tracks. We have abundance of amenities and it's really a cool gated community. So we've got multiple barbecue areas, a tranquil yoga lawn, resort-style pool, shaded dining areas, a hammock park, outdoor game stations, a, a dog park, pet grooming station. We have a disc golf course in the, in that 40 acres, which would be very cool, and a multi-use trail, valet trash pickup, fire pits, a fitness studio, clubhouse with kitchen and lawn, and then a car care station, which is like a community hose where you would wash your car. So we're, we're right-sizing the commercial. We're excited about this project and we very much ask for your approval. You, you make changes to the comp plan when it's appropriate. In this case, I think it's more than, more than appropriate. The only other thing we would ask is that you delete stipulation number five, which talks about us not having that car care station. And I think that might just be because there was a misunderstanding, like it's not a car wash, there's not going to be stacking, it's a hose where people can co-wash their cars that live in the community. So we'd like to, we'd like to keep that amenity. It's been very successful in their communities and other places. People like to be able to wash their car without having to pay for it, you know, so the people who live in the community, that is. So thank you. I would take any questions. Oh, and I would just mention one other thing. The neighbor who had opposition is not here today. I think that says a lot. We tried to work with the whole community, so. And thank you, Supervisor Goodman gave us names at the outset and we really tried to reach out.
Okay, the car station is a hose and a slab.
Amen, it is. It is, yes.
Okay. Any questions for the applicants and the presenter?
I think somebody touched on it, but Supervisor Goodman and I both were wondering, did you think that the traffic would be less this way than, what, what do you see traffic flow down there? Because that's the main question on everybody's mind in San Tan.
That's a great question. Thank you, chairman. And Supervisor Surti, we actually went back to a traffic engineer to find out and the, the commercial traffic will be 10 times more than the residential multifamily traffic. So this is actually a reduction in the traffic if we were to keep this at 36 acres, provided it would be successful, of course, which is doubtful. is doubtful.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'm going to open up the public hearing portion. Does anyone like to speak on this item? I guess, did you change your mind? It happens.
So thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. You've been here and been very patient this morning and into the afternoon, so let me just say amen to what my good friend and colleague, Jordan Rose, had to say about this case. I think it highlights exactly what we're talking about. I'm here today on behalf of the property owner, Mr. John Hill, who will retain the ownership of what Jordan indicated to you. It's about nine and a half acres on the northern end of this property, which he and I are working on right now to file an application in the coming months for commercial and office-type uses, which is, as the applicant said, right sizing what we're talking about. The other comment, just briefly, members of the Board, Mr. Chairman, is the non-major comprehensive plan amendment, which really amends the Santan Valley specific area plan or special area plan, really needs to be done one way or the other. We encourage your full support of all three of these cases. But if you remember that exhibit that Ms. Rose showed to you, it, I would call it a Scrivener's air. If it was a written document, the person that wrote it just made a typo or a Scrivener's air, that line should have been moved over. It should all be in the Commerce Center because that yellow triangle that you saw, that's designated for suburban development. You can't even have access to it. You couldn't build a single-family house in there if you wanted to. So we'd encourage you to vote yes on all three of these cases today, and thank you for your patience and time. Any questions?
Any questions?
That's it? Thanks. Okay.
Thank you. Any other comments or to this project? Just item 10 on the agenda.
Public hearing. Have you, have you closed the public hearing, Chairman?
I haven't closed it. I'm just leaving it open to make sure everybody had an opportunity. So now I'm going to close the public hearing. So on item 10, anything else?
Sir, no.
Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chair, in light of some of the things that have been discussed here, and obviously with the amount of space that we do have that's designated as commercial, and one of the biggest, this is probably one of the biggest areas that has retail leakage already component that's, we've all seen the amount of retail leakage that leaves this particular area. We need to be reminded of that with other projects and things as they come forward, especially some of these apartment complexes that are already being proposed to us in this particular area. And yeah, there's a need for these high-density, there's a big need for these type of housing, affordable-type housing, or these type of locations. And so, and so this is kind of a tough one to look at, but whenever you talk about and looking at it from the perspective of kind of putting it into what the day's market is all about, that's why I'm inclined to go ahead and, and make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2021, PZPA-020-21, as written, and that's for item number 10, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Ayes have it. Okay. Brings us to item number 11, which is still the same project. Is there any, this will be an ordinance, ordinance number 2021, PZ015, move the paperclip, 21. Is there any other presentation or discussion about item number 11, which is all the same project? Okay, I need to open up the public hearing. Public hearing on item number 11 is open. Does anybody like to speak to it at this point?
Look out, here they come.
Seeing none, public hearing is closed. So Board's pleasure on item number 11.
Mr. Chair, I, I would move that we approve ordinance number 2021-PZ-015-21.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay.
Was that number 11 or 12?
11.
I think you read the wrong number. No, you, you were right.
Okay. Okay. Now we're on item number 12, which is another ordinance. So, and it shows 2021-PZPD025-21. Any, any more discussion, questions, comments? I'm going to open the public hearing on item number 12. It's open.
Chair and Vice Chair, thank you for your support on the last two cases. And I would just ask, if you, if you believe in a community hose, you would remove stipulation number five. Thank you.
On, on this, on item number 12?
This particular item.
So, any other public comments? Hearing has seen none. I'm going to close the public hearing. So item number 12. Does anybody got a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number, ordinance number 2021-PZ-PD-025-21, as written, with the stipulation, though, the Planning Commission recommended denial, 62. But there was 15 stipulations. What I would ask is that we remove stipulation number five, the hose stipulation.
Okay, all right. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Ayes have it. Okay. Natasha, I see Mr. Swig back there. Can we jump down there and grab his? Is that okay? You all right with that? Todd, let's jump to item number, I think, what are you here, 14. You've been sitting back there patiently. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. I'm Todd Swig. I'm the Superior Court Administrator. And today, we have a request to, to develop a program coordinator position. It's for housing stability. So it's grant-funded. The idea is, is for emergency rental assistance. And the idea is to get money to the landlords for unpaid rent. So the idea came through DES and the Administrative Office of the Courts, and they looked at Pinal County because we have the third-highest eviction rates. So they thought that we could make use of this position. We could have this person work with our justice courts and have them, have them be able to get into their databases to try to identify people that have current evictions or upcoming evictions. And we thought about that, and I called our housing director, and we talked about it further. And they have several different ideas on how we could possibly make use of this position, including the court part. So our plan is, is to detail the position to the housing director and the housing department. We don't want to reinvent the wheel, and that's, that's what they're experts at. But we would also have them have access to our justice courts and their databases. And the idea, like I said, is to provide housing stability for people in Pinal County and get landlords' money that have rent owing. It's completely grant-funded. There are no match funds. DES says that it could last several years, but it's kind of based on how useful the position ends up being. And so it's renewable every year. We report our results, I believe, on a monthly basis.
Okay. Sounds interesting. Sounds like not a bad idea. Any questions for Mr. Swig?
One, one question.
Sure, absolutely.
The grant funding. So is that, it's renewable yearly, annually, or I mean, okay?
Yes, annually.
So it's not a, like a three- or four-year grant?
It's, it's yearly.
Thank you.
And you said the third-highest rate of addiction?
Eviction.
Third?
Eviction, right. And I think we average around 2,200 yearly.
What, what rate? Rate of what? The state of Arizona?
Yes, yes.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Thank you. And presumably, there's another grant that we, I believe I've heard this in the past, where we have funds available to, to draw upon, to pay rent for a particular time, and this facilitates that, just for clarification.
That's correct. And the grant is on a reimbursement basis. So as we expend money for this position, we get reimbursed.
Okay. And the, the money for the rent comes from?
From this grant, from the federal government.
Okay.
It's part of the...
It's part of the same grant?
Correct.
It's not two different grants, okay.
Correct.
Okay, you good? Any other questions, comments? Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve item number 14, Emergency Rental Assistance Program, as presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Board.
Are we at a point you want to break, Natasha? Is the food here? Okay. Okay, we're going to recess, and then we'll come back. And I think we've got everybody else is in the room, so we're going to break for lunch. Recession. We're back in session. So we're going to item number 13. Ms. Kennedy?
Natasha Kennedy, Clerk of the Board, Vice Chairman, Board Members. I stand before you today asking for approval for the Deputy Clerk position for Records Management. As outlined in the memo that is attached to the agenda, the Clerk of the Board Office has experienced a lot of increase in our daily duties. Along with the increase in our service demands, some of those increases consist of, one of the most important duties of this office, and that is our agenda management. In fiscal year 1920, the Clerk of the Board Office processed 1,111 agenda items. Fiscal year 2021, that number increased to 1,498. Currently, right now, with fiscal year 2122, we have processed 566 items. And as it stands right now, we are probably going to increase this fiscal year from the previous fiscal year. We continue the trend of processing agenda items. Another overwhelmingly increased demand has been our Board of Equalization items. Fiscal year 2021, we processed 30. Already for fiscal year 2122, we have processed 31 BOE items. So that's just some of the items that we have experienced an increase in demand, along with the increase of duties that the office has had. So with that, Chairman, Board Members, I am seeking for approval. The actual salary for this position is at midpoint. The reason is to ensure that I can hire, if approved, a qualified candidate that is aware of the state regulations when it comes to records management. Any questions?
Okay, any questions? Okay. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number 13 as presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Ayes have it. We've already done 14, so now that's going to move us on to 15. Discussion, approval, disapproval on ongoing increase in school superintendent's department. And Jill was here, and Jill's not here, and...
Mr. Chairman, I was able to speak with School Superintendent Jill Burside before she had another appointment she needed to go to. She just asked me to communicate to the Board that she needs budget capacity in order to have flexibility to hire and fill positions. So with some of the offers that she needs to make to fill these positions, she doesn't have the current budget capacity to do that.
Okay. Is everyone comfortable with that? Do you have something?
Chairman, I have, I have a question. I'm just kidding. I do have a comment on our notes here. This goes back to having the budget capacity per person to hire quality people, as I understand it, which is a problem we have throughout the county, where we have open positions because we can't pay enough for a qualified person to take the job. So I think if, if I'm correct, County Manager Lou, that's, that's what this problem, what this agenda item addresses. Is that correct?
Some of the policies that were adopted in, in the process to give more flexibility related to compensation have been very helpful. But some of the budgets in the departments may not have been developed and designed with the flexibility to go along with those policies. So this will help to do that.
Okay. She's, she's, she's a constitutional elected individual, so her budget process and stuff is more internal than, than integrating with ours, I guess is a way to put it.
And this would be her general fund office budget that's a part of our normal budget process and adoption. And so at the time that she requested the budget she did back in, you know, April and May, that was the situation that she's in. But now she finds herself in a different situation. And I think that a lot of us have, in the sense of the way recruiting and the way, you know, the workforce need and demand is, and, and what we're trying to recruit and get, and the competition for those workers, has been an increasing pressure on the county as a whole, over even the last six, seven months.
Right. Do you have something?
All I have to say is, this just goes back to my comment earlier, back to finance and management, or budget and management, that we look through each department and see what they need. And this is, this is exactly that process.
Yep, correct.
Yeah, the environment for labor is, is a very big challenge at this point in time. So anyway, we can talk about that all day if we wanted, but... Okay, Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve item number 50 as presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Okay. Brings us to item number 16.
Do we say no now, or?
Yeah. Well, too late in the day. All the money's been spent. We're out of money.
Pinal County Attorney Kent Valkmer, here on Agenda Item 16. This is really three different things that we're asking you to do in one agenda item. We're actually asking you to create an entirely new position, asking you to authorize us fill that entirely new position, and asking your authorization to eliminate a prior position. And really, what this is about is the new Maricopa FAC that we took on. I had prepped the Board back when we took it on that we were probably going to need like an assistant manager, because what we have right now is we have one director. And my director is really the one who does Spanish forensic interviews. She also is in charge of all the administrative, making sure that everything's lined up. And again, with family advocacy centers, they're not really well-planned in advance. I mean, generally, they're on an as-needed basis. So we get a call, you know, at 3:30 because a kid came in and told their teacher that something happened to them, or the school nurse witnesses a bruise, and we have to set things up very quickly. My director actually does the forensic interviews as well. And what happens is when she's doing these interviews, or when she is focusing on Eloy, or she's focusing on Santan at the time, there's a whole nother, you know, center, Maricopa, or Eloy, or Santan, that there's really nobody there that can give any direction. We find ourselves in this weird position. We don't have any assistant managers, so we don't have anybody that has supervisory ability. We don't have anybody that has the authority to say, you need to go do this, you need to go do this, you need to go do this. My initial plan is to say, hey, I want an assistant manager. Unfortunately, the county doesn't have an assistant manager or assistant director position. So we talked about, do we want to make this person a to make this person a senior, do we want to make this person a lead, we worked with Randy Tracy in HR, we worked with Mary Ellen Shepherd in County Management, ultimately, we decided that this lead position would be the most appropriate, because their primary job is still to do forensic interviews, our intention is to hire from within, that's why we're eliminating one position, whoever is a successful candidate under our proposal, their underlying position would be eliminated, so it would be somebody from within, and they're still, 90, 95% of their responsibility is still doing forensic interviews, it's that time when, you know, my director's on vacation, my director's indisposed, that she's not available, this person would have that authority to say, no, this is what we're doing, yes, we're taking this, no, we're not taking it, and reassign resources as necessary, when I say resources, frankly, reassign people to where they need to be, sometimes in the past, we've used our law enforcement to do it, that's really not the best use of it, my, my investigators will pinch-hit sometimes, we think that this is necessary, particularly now that we have three distinct centers that are geographically located all over the place, we had planned for this, when we took on the Maricopa FAC, I had told the Board that I believed it was going to be necessary, we've waited a little while, we've had that now for about four months, we confirmed that there is getting some points where we have some confusion, where we don't have strong leadership that we need, when we, when I submitted my budget at the beginning of the year for this fiscal year, we had already included those funds, assuming that, that I was going to make this request, so it's not really impacting the fiscal budget, because we're asking essentially to fill the position that I had prepared everyone for six months ago, and really, that's what I'm here, so what we're asking is to create this new position, which would be the forensic interviewer lead, we're asking for permission to be able to fill that position, and then, once that position is filled, to eliminate, because we're hiring from within, that's a whole lot of words in a short period of time, does anybody have any questions or concerns?
That'd look good on Vaudeville. Okay, any questions?
Vaudeville dates you a bit, I think.
It does, it does, it does, I'm old, but anyway, all right, well, Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number 16 as presented.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, say nay? Ayes have it, item number 17 is discussion of the Board, is, is the, asking, is there any future agenda items that somebody would like to see, either on an agenda, or a discussion, or a study session, or that we can all discuss, and, okay, we're not hearing none, or seeing none, no comments, want to adjourn this meeting.